Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to come back into open session. We have nothing to report out of our closed-session discussions, but we do have an item on our special meeting agenda, 3.1, so if we could call that item, please.
And that would be to, item 3.1 is to consider a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with women escaping a violent environment incorporated for the purpose of applying for a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice for a domestic violence response team.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. My name is Rodney Rigo and I'm a captain with the Elk Grove Police Department. There's no PowerPoint with this presentation tonight. We are asking you to adopt a resolution authorizing an MOU between the city and WEVE, which is Women Escaping a Violent Environment, that will allow for the application of a three-year federal grant funding a domestic violence response team. It would also authorize the city manager to execute contracts related to the grant and to amend the police department's budget up to the amount of the grant. This would be a continuation of our current grant and successful partnership with WEVE that serves an extremely vulnerable population of our community who are often powerless and lack the resources to remove themselves or their children from violence. This has been presented at a special meeting due to the short timeline we had to prepare and submit the grant, the budget, and the MOU. We only learned this grant on February 7th of this year. There are no matching funds and there are no fiscal impacts. And I'm open to any questions.
Very good. Any questions? No?
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Remove.
Do you need public comment on this one? I'll open up for a public comment. Is there anybody wishing to speak on this item? Okay, seeing nobody, we'll go ahead and close the public comment opportunity. No? I have a motion from council members. Detrick?
Okay, I'll second, just to say also that we're grateful for WEVE's partnership in this.
Very good. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And we'll adjourn the special meeting of the Elk Grove City Council and call to order the regular meeting of the Elk Grove City Council for Wednesday, February 27th at 6:06 PM. And now will the city clerk please read the Metro replay statement.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, March 1st at 1:00 PM and Monday, March 4th at 6:00 PM. It is being closed captioned and it will be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete one of the speaker cards, the blue cards, which can be found at the back of the room, and provide it to the assistant city clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And now for a roll call, and before the roll call, I will note that the mayor is in the building. He's just finishing up some business in the back, so he will be out here shortly.
With that, I will note that council member Winn is absent. Council member Detrick?
Here.
Council member Soen?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hume?
Here.
And Mayor Lee is absent for the time being, but apparently here in the building.
All right, very good. I see planning commissioner George Murphy in the audience. Would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now, as is customary, following the Pledge of Allegiance, we entertain a moment of silence, so please join us in a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, there's agenda in front of us. Do we have a motion to approve?
Remove.
Second.
A motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, we have no closed session on the regular agenda?
No closed session.
Moving on to item 4.1.
That'd be under our presentations and announcements. 4.1 is a presentation of a key to the city to Joey Hand, and I believe there's some speaking points up there, Vice Mayor, if you'd...
Okay. If you'll excuse me briefly, I just want to double-check and make sure the mayor doesn't want to come out to do this, so be right back.
Can you carry a tune?
Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We get to do the fun stuff now. Key to the city. See, on behalf of the entire city council, I'm pleased to honor Joey Hand with the Elk Grove Key to the City. As Joey and the council make our way to the podium, let's take a look at his highlight reel, provided courtesy of the International Motor Sport Association.
In GTLM, there's battles as well. My goodness, where do we look at the moment?
It's still Joey Hand leading in the Ford GT. They won Le Mans and Ford GT winning at Daytona!
I'm crying, guys. Thanks so much.
Because you know what's awaiting there. It's a very special timepiece.
That Ford is just in the sweet spot. The track clearly suits their car. Ford, Ford GT, Dirk Mueller, Joey Hand, they'll add a victory at Watkins Glen.
This is fantastic stuff. Meantime, the two Fords are having a battle here. One name straight, and here comes Joey Hand, the 66 car is right there. EM versus Ford, what a battle we're seeing here today. Ford goes the leader at the bottom of the downhill. Through has gone Joey Hand.
And slower.
Joey Hand, Dirk Mueller came into Lime Rock Park in third, looking for their second win of the season. They're going to get it as Joey comes through the downhill one more time. Ford, the Ford GT, they'll take another victory in the 2018 season as Hand and Mueller win at Lime Rock Park.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is Joey Hand, our celebrity tonight. This is a special moment to celebrate Joey among his friends, his fans, and his family. And it's a chance to celebrate our community and the people that have influenced Joey and countless other students to step out into the world and to do great things. Joey joins the company of NASCAR Kyle Larson, another clip, Chip Ganassi Racing Team member, and athletes including former Chicago Bears linebacker Lance Briggs, gold medal Paralympic cyclist Jamie Whitmore. The key to the city is an honorary gesture of appreciation and welcome that we reserve for notable Elk Grove residents. The program relies on nomination from the community, and I'd like to recognize Joey Tomko. Where's Joey? Is he in here? There he is, yeah. An area resident who was the source of this nomination. Joey's family, this Joey, settled in the area in mid-1980s. He attended James McKee Elementary School, Currie Middle School, and Elk Grove High School. As his racing career took off, he transitioned to Los Flores where he earned his diploma. Joey's entrepreneurial spirit, his passion for racing, and his strong work ethics inspired him to start a kart, kart school at the age of 17. He also owned a kart shop in Elk Grove and the concession stand at the kart track at Prairie City for four years. His racing career eventually took off and led him to even larger achievement. In 2016, he won the GTE Pro category at the Le Mans 24 Hours and the GTLM title at the Rolex 24 at Daytona in 2017. And co-drivers Dirk Miller and Sebastian and Bourdes, both of these races are considered the pentacles of 24-hour sport car endurance racing. Today Joey is widely considered as one of the best road racers in the world. He currently drives the number 66 Ford GT in his fourth season with the Ford Chip Ganassi Racing Team in the IMSA WeatherTech Sports Car Championship Series, the highest level of North American sports car racing. His racing career takes him all over the world, but Joey, his wife Natalie, and his children still call Elk Grove area their home. The council and I join your friends, family, and fans in celebrating your success, Joey, and I am pleased to present you with the Elk Grove Key to the City. As the council like to say, this key is a, is a symbol of the key to heart. And I, for the record, I want to say, actually, this gentleman said it, council member Steve Detrick, "It is our way of letting you know that the door is always open for you here at City Hall." Congratulations, Joey. Appreciate it.
You'd like to say something? Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Yeah, Mayor Lee said I should wear this around my neck. It'd be the best place for it, for, is that what you told me? Oh, man, this is a huge honor for me. Man, I'm so thankful for so many things, but thankful to the city of Elk Grove, the city council, and of course, Mayor Lee for this, Joey for the nomination, and just everybody. I gotta say, I won't take long here, because I know there's other important things to do, but, you know, thankful for my parents who got me into racing, who moved us to Elk Grove in the, in the mid-'80s and, you know, made this our home. Of course, my, my brothers and my family, all my friends who support me, my wife Natalie who's been with me since we were 16-years-old, we've been together, so she's seen, she's seen all of it. Yeah. I know, she's crazy. My kids chasing Kaylee, who always rooting for daddy and telling me to stand on the loud pedal, "Don't tell the EGPD guys that, it's their fault." That's why I need this around my neck, Mayor Lee says. And, yeah, you know, we moved here 35-years ago, it's crazy. I remember when Elk Grove was a town, and now it's a, you know, it's a pretty big city. We have Best Buy and BJ's and all that stuff, but, you know, what, we love raising our family here still. We, we eat, you know, the local family-owned restaurants like Plaza del Sol and Palermo and all the places everybody around here knows are the good places, Umai Sushi out in Wilton. But we just love it here. There's, you know, I've, I've traveled all over this world, I've raced in some cool places. I mean Budapest and Monaco and all these different places, and, you know, people always ask me, is there, you know, you, there's all these places you could live, why come back to where, where you live? And I'm, because it's home. Elk Grove for me is always, always be home. There's a couple of things for me. I leave the country, I go racing or wherever I go, one thing, I love to come back to the United States of America, and two, I always love making that drive from Sacramento International Airport down here to Elk Grove, so, like I said, very, very humbled, very honored, very thankful, and, yeah, I'll see you guys out in the town. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it.
Thanks again, guys. Appreciate it.
Hey, drive safe, it's wet out there.
I got this. I think, folks, let's move to the next item.
Take us to section five, our public comment.
Public comment, we have our first speaker is Mike Barnbaum.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and members of the council, staff, and audience. My name is Mike Barnbaum. I'm a community transit ambassador for the region and wanted to thank council member and RT board member Pat Hume for being part of a historic night on Monday night when item seven, the SACRT Forward Project, was approved by a 78 to 22 supermajority. This is going to be an exciting time for the Sacramento Regional Transit District and riders throughout the region. The plan is very extensive, but just to highlight to you and to your constituents, the plan will include 27 regular bus routes, of which 26 will operate seven days a week. The plan includes also 14 commuter routes that will operate on weekday schedules. Of the 27 regular bus routes, three of them will interact with existing E-Trans services at the Cassounus River College transfer point, and it's going to be a little bit different than what you have today. So just to go on the record, you have three RT bus routes currently that connect with E-Trans services in addition to the South County Transit and the Blue Line to Watnaieti. It will still remain three regular RT bus routes, but it will address a lot of the issues about travel patterns that are going to be a lot different starting on Father's Day that are not in place today. Your Route 56 that RT operates from CRC to the Pocket Transit Center will remain intact, primarily along Mac and Meadowview roads. But what's going to be different is that the routes today of 54 and 55 will make way to Route 67 and 68. The objective of these two routes will combine to provide 15-minute service weekdays and Saturdays, and combine to provide 30-minute service on Sundays and holidays, primarily between Cassounus River College all the way north to Arden Fair Mall. This is a significant change from what today's Route 54 and Route 55 do, which is primarily remaining in southern Sacramento County. So people will be able to make very good county-wide transportation one-seat rides from Cassounus River College. In closing, we look forward to an item later on your agenda, which I'm here for, but I wanted to provide this to you to lead off the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Our next speaker is Joey Tomko.
Hello, guys.
Hi, Joey.
Okay, so, people usually come up here just to complain, and that's what I'm here for, but I realized I did come up here to thank Bob for fixing the Sheldon Light and the police for not killing my son, so not every time do I come up here to complain. Just wanted to let that out there. So, you guys, the development that you got going on Bradshaw and Grantline, I think you guys call it the triangle, I don't know what. For months and months, trucks of dirt took their line down Grant, well, I can tell you the route, but I'm only worried about Grantline. Well, I meant to come here before the rains started, because I knew it would get worse, and they have, going eastbound, there is on the right side a rut this deep that's starting to come up because of the rains. So, and I know you guys are responsible for Grantline and the county's responsible for Calvine, so that's why I'm here. It needs to be fixed, and I'm sorry that I didn't come before the rains, but you can follow their route from when they pulled out, they go down Bradshaw, make a right on Elk Grove Boulevard, make a left on Grantline, a left on Cal, or on Calvine, and a right on Excelsior, and you can follow the rut all the way, because there was hundreds of trucks a day for months, and they did a lot of road damage. They pay you fees for this, so take some of those fees and fix the road, please. Okay? I know you like to use fees for everything else, but, another thing, petty, little late, the Christmas tree lights. My god, guys, what a joke. I got a guy, a friend of mine, who says he will pay the city to let him put lights on our city Christmas tree next year, because what you had there, five-year-old kids could have done a better job. It was embarrassing to the city of Elk Grove to have four strands of light hanging from a tree, whoopee. And my friend is not joking, he will pay somebody if the city can't afford it to decorate, because he lives on Second Street, and it was, he's the one who brought it to my attention. So, next year, call me if you can't do it yourself, we'll get it done, because that was embarrassing to the city. My third and last thing is, for some of you, the voting by district or by the whole city, I know you're afraid to go to district because you won't get re-elected, but that's, that's not our, that's, that's not what it's about, okay? I mean, Cooper, he gets voted in by district, Berra gets voted in by district, so why aren't we doing district? I know why, but let's get over it, guys, okay? Let's drop the eagles, let's do what's right, and let's start voting by districts, all right? If so, I might even run for your seat. But it's all about money when you make it to...
Be my seat.
That's right, you're right. It's, it's, it's all about money, too, because now if I got to campaign for the whole city rather than the people that I represent, it costs me more money, which you're all very aware of, and which the ones of you that get voted because of the whole city rather than your district, that's why you don't want to change it. I think the mayor was the one that said he wanted to change it. I support that. So, let's quit playing this political game and let's get it done for the city and for the people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joey. Our next speaker is Daisy Hugh. Daisy?
Yes, my name is Daisy Hughes, and this is my first time speaking before the city council, and fortunately, it's regarding my own personal safety and that of my family. I participated on Saturday in the protest that was held by NEST, Neighbors Ensuring Stone Lake Transparency. We were protesting against the California North State University Hospital, and we were protesting in front of Mayor Lee's appreciation event, which was also being held at the CNU location. Overall, it was a positive protest. We feel that we were giving voices to residents who felt that they weren't heard during the information session the day before. Unfortunately, during that, during that protest, a man by the name of Ty Sorcey, a city employee, walked through us, intimidated us, took pictures of us and our children. I thought to myself, what am I doing here? I don't protest things. Why am I exposing myself this way? And thank god I didn't bring my small child here, which I was going to that day, I thought it'd be a good learning experience. I am wondering, is that man going to come after me? He said that he was track, keeping track. Have I put my family in danger? Mayor Lee, I hold you accountable for this. That was your man. We were standing in front of a building where you were, and your right-hand man came out and intimidated us. I voted for you. I voted for you because you are the first-hung American mayor in our nation, and I thought you would be rooting for the underdog, but you don't. You root for the large businesses who are coming after, destroying our small businesses and not acting in the interest of the residents. I have no doubt that you will do whatever it takes to get CNU their hospital. And I am speaking right now on the record to make sure that my family and I are protected and an incident like this doesn't happen again, because NEST will throw another protest, and it's going to be larger, and I'm going to bring my son. Thank you.
Thank you, man. Our next speaker is Roger Warwick. Roger?
Yeah, I'm also, my name is Roger Warwick, I'm here to speak on the hospital myself. I noticed that when I went to the meeting at the Asian Sports Center, they handed out a map where the hospital was going to be. And the hospital is going to be on the end of a dead-end street, so there's only one way in, one way out. So to me, that's a fire safety hazard, because now, the fire trucks coming in off of East, West Tarron will not be able to get into the neighborhood of Stone Lake, because they'll have to travel through the traffic of the hospital to get to the neighbors that they have to serve. Once they get in there and serve that neighborhood, then they have to get out, they have to face the same traffic coming out. So I can't see any common sense at all to put a hospital on a dead-end street. It just makes no logic sense to me at all. So, for the safety of the people that are in Stone Lake, please do not put this hospital in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Jason Stelling. Following Jason is Melinda Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Lee, I memorized that well. I was too, was at the protest in front of your, a party for your donors, and I had my children with me. And it reminded me of 19, early 1960s, when I see these old films of the FBI taking pictures of people like Martin Luther King and other civil rights activists. It's appalling. We're a bunch of suburban parents, teachers, soccer moms, retired folks. We don't, we're not threatening you. Are you afraid of us? I'm not afraid of you, you shouldn't be afraid of me. It's disgusting. I've seen you at the Martin, I took my son, older son, to the Martin Luther King March. I've seen you up on the dais there, taking pictures, show voting, or whatever you do there. It's, it's hypocritical, very hypocritical, and a hospital's a bad idea there. I'm just pissed off. Hey, I should be on your side, or you should be on my side. Been Democrat all my life. That's not Democratic. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Melinda Robinson. Following Melinda is Marit Sandhu.
Good evening, council members. I am here to speak my concerns over California North State University's proposed hospital. I want to make sure that I accurately capture the proposed changes to the zoning code that has an impact on CNU's project. The current code states that healthcare facilities and government facilities shall be prohibited from building in a flood district. City council may approve exception to this if it determines operation of a proposed facility would be substantially compromised in an alternative location. Your proposed change is going to state that, to the extent feasible, a new essential public facility shall be located outside the flood area or shall be constructed so as to minimize damage to said facilities if located in such an area. For purposes of this section, essential public facilities include and is not limited to hospitals, healthcare facilities, emergency shelters, fire stations, emergency command centers, and emergency communication facilities. I have to ask, why the change to the current code? What prompted this specific code to require an amendment? What happened or has happened that created the need for this change? Could it be that a couple of years ago, there was a conversation that took place between our city leaders and a proposed business like CNU, where it was determined that this amendment was needed in order to enable their hospital to be built? So here we have another clue to the truth. For CNU to succeed with their facility, the location requires rezoning, and now that there's a proposed change to the zoning code, interesting coincidence? I cannot think of any business in their right mind that would front millions and millions of dollars to purchase land absent some concrete understanding that their project would proceed as planned. Somewhere CNU got it in their heads that this hospital is a green light. Mr. Soen, our district representative, said in an Elk Grove article that the city's role is limited only to the application process, yet our city leaders participated in the press conference announcing the project. Our district representative hosted an informational meeting that was very choreographed and censored. Our mayor conducted his community appreciation dinner at a CNU facility. CNU's proposed building site requires rezoning, and we suddenly have a zoning amendment which further promotes the completion of their project. Our mayor's employee verbally and physically harassed and intimidated peaceful protesters. The actions of Mr. Sorcey that day accurately and perfectly echo the actions of our city leaders in CNU. You have all blazed your way into our peaceful lives with full disregard for your disrespect and disruption. You have all done this with an air of entitlement and an assumed dismissal of our rights. Your conduct and CNU's conduct has led to a serious question of trust and ethics. Your own city code of ethics pledges responsibility, fairness, respect, and honesty. You have a responsibility to the citizens and community of West Elk Grove to protect and preserve the safety, well-being, and quality... and preserve the safety, well-being, and quality of our neighborhood. You have not exercised fairness when you promote the destruction of small businesses in our quiet community for profit and what we know so far is merely a gamble of a business for CNU. Your own staff has demonstrated a lack of respect, as evidenced by Mr. Sorsy. And as for honesty, this whole process is screaming with lies and we may never get to the truth, but we will continue to demand it. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Emery Sandu. Emery? Following Emery is Jan Smutney Jones.
And Ms. Sandu submitted, uh, a request to have the city code of ethics pulled up while she makes her comments.
Thank you. I just wanted the city code of conduct up there so that you can reference it as I make my talk today. I would like to comment on my experience since I first spoke to you guys on January 9th. It was my first time ever engaging in anything civics, okay? Discussed it at the federal level. I was very untrusting of you guys at the city level. I came to speak because something's really going to impact my community and impact my quality of life. At the city council meeting on the 9th, the PR representative for CNU took pictures of residents who spoke against the hospital. When I approached him and asked him why he took pictures, he said he was just recording this, the session. When asked why he specifically took a picture of me, Mr. Wood said that you were just in the picture. And I felt intimidated that day, intimidated. At the community forum on February 26th, held by Councilman Swin, and I appreciate you for doing that, um, Councilmember Nguyen, who's, or Wen, sorry, who's not here, embraced the same gentleman with a hug and when she arrived to the event. On Sunday, the 23rd, I also attended the protest and helped organize it. Mayor Lee, we knew you were having your reelection party there and we wanted to make a statement, okay? This is all part of the democratic process that you released in your statement following this. This was, this was, um, the police were dispatched and I was able to speak to the sergeant. He said we were fine, we weren't doing anything wrong. Mr. Wagstaff actually came out and offered water and said, hey, this is just part of the process. And I was like, you know, thanks. Then, um, your political appointee forcefully walked past me. I waved to him, told him to take a better picture of me and say hi to you and gave him my name. What bothered me was he continued to walk through the crowd in the middle of the sidewalk, his right, it's a public sidewalk. He made it very clear to us that it was a public sidewalk. He walked past me and approached another group of women. And at that point, he did engage in taking some more pictures. And at that point, some of the mothers got very nervous because their small children were in it. My two teenage girls were there, they actually asked him, please don't take pictures of us, we're minors. He said this is a public sidewalk. They weren't part of the protest, they were doing stats homework at HTE, which would be demolished if CNU gets built. They also told him that they felt uncomfortable. Mayor Lee, is this how your representatives treat residents and your constituents when we do not agree with your point of view? The city council is supposed to be a neutral party in the development and this was stated not only by Mr. Swin, but the other leaders who came out and spoke to us about the process. They said it was their job to be neutral and to represent the city and find the best resolution and address any mitigations if that needed to be. But I ask you, is it neutral to hold your reelection party at CNU whose CEO and affiliates contributed to your campaigns? I checked the 460s, there was a lot of contributions. And that's your right, you have the every right to accept it. But are you truly representing your constituents? What accountability do you have, Mr. Lee, when your appointees harassing and intimidating residents who are peacefully assembling? Am I supposed to stop opposing because I don't agree with you? Do I have to not feel safe in my own city? I mentioned to everybody at Mr. Swin's, um, forum, I used to manage a Taco Bell down the street for Bob Whitlock. I've been here for years. I put myself through school, I'm now a healthcare provider, I work in the community, I coach soccer, I'm a Girl Scout leader. But now I come to you for help and I feel threatened. And that's not okay.
Our next speaker is Jan Smutney Jones. Following Jan is Susan Pesci.
Thank you, Mayor Lee and, uh, City Councilman. I want to make some general comments, uh, also on the, uh, the, uh, trauma center. And first, I want to thank Councilman Swin for having, uh, the meeting on Friday. It was the first actual public meeting where we got to at least hear what's going to happen in our neighborhood. It was a little frustrating because some of us would have liked to counter some of the, uh, we had, we had a pitch from, uh, Mr. Broome from the Sacramento Economic Development Group or whatever about what's going to happen to our town. It would have been nice to basically counter that, but I want to be clear on that, that was the first time that we've heard anything. The developer was not very forthcoming, but we did learn some things. CNU has bought some additional property north of Elk Grove Boulevard, uh, which raises questions about the actual scope of this project. The, uh, it was clear, uh, from, uh, from the developer that funding sources for the project do not appear to be secure. And we'll note that while CNU has built a pharmacy school here, um, they are not a, as far as we understand, an experienced developer of large-scale, uh, trauma centers. There does not to be, appear to be any arrangement with any recognized insurance carriers questioning, uh, raising the questions of who's basically going to use this hospital. It is possible, it turns out, that the existing businesses which we use, uh, like Miyabi, which is a great sushi bar, and I know you're familiar with it, um, uh, basically go away and nothing replaces them. Uh, that, that, and that is one of our biggest fears. The city requires, uh, no financial security, that existing businesses can be destroyed without recourse. I'm told it's all private property. I'm a lawyer, I understand private property, but to me, uh, this is, is raising some significant questions. The, the staff could not identify any other location in Elk Grove where existing, uh, businesses that serve a community such as ours is being destroyed in order to bring any larger project that some, some people may think is, is a wonderful idea. And, you know, this is, uh, strange for us because of the unfortunate experience that this community has had with the ghost mall, okay? Which was another brilliant idea, uh, that happened a while ago and it was being, actually being developed by people who appeared to know what they're doing and it's now being raised, okay? We don't want that to happen in our neighborhood. I lived there when there was nothing but tumbleweeds, uh, in that lot and I don't want it to go back to tumbleweeds. So, um, Stone Lake runs the risk of having our neighborhood businesses destroyed, uh, which should be a warning to other small businesses throughout Elk Grove, uh, that, uh, you know, uh, anything can happen to you, anything can and will, uh, potentially happen to you. So, just in, in closing, uh, that trauma center does not belong in our quiet neighborhood in the middle of a bird preserve. There may be other places for it, you've already cited one hospital in, in Elk Grove. It does not belong in our community and I think you, you've been hearing that pretty consistently, uh, throughout the evening. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is, uh, Susan Pesci. Following Susan is Lynn Wheat.
So, good evening. For the record, my name is Suzanne Pesci and I'm just going to, um, change the conversation just a little bit. Um, tonight I want to repeat, um, the concerns, um, of the citizens about transparency. And I want to say that as a 42-year resident of Elk Grove, you know, I've been engaged in water issues throughout the area for the past, uh, three years. And I am developing a concern, and it's my opinion, uh, that the city of Elk Grove and Elk Grove Water Service, behind closed doors with other public agencies, including, um, Sacramento County Water Agency and the Board of Supervisors, um, are engaged in forming a contractual arrangement, um, that includes the formation of a new special district, um, to provide water service, municipal water service to new areas outside the city limits that you wish to develop. This is all being done without benefit of the public process that's prescribed by law, which includes public hearings, possible voter approval, protest hearings, and protest voting for those in opposition to the formation of such a special district. It's my opinion, after having attended Florin Resource Conservation District, Elk Grove Water District meetings throughout the past three years, that this new proposal for a new special district involving the city of Elk Grove and Elk Grove Water Service, among others, includes the expansion of the current boundaries of Florin Resource Conservation District, Elk Grove Water District, or formerly known as those entities. I'm not aware that any resident and rate payers in the current boundaries of these, of this district were made aware of the impending proposed boundary expansion in the recent Prop. 218 assessment hearings and the approval of the rate study. The residents in the current boundaries, as well as the proposed residents in the extent, in the expanded boundaries, have not seen to date a feasibility study, financial analysis, the map for the proposed boundaries of the new special district, a plan for the expanded water service into new areas the city wants to develop. They haven't seen timelines or reports from Lavco that all, that are all required by law. And I am asking, when are we going to see them as a community? What is the impact to municipal water users, to the agres homeowners that are dependent on wells? Who is in the boundary of this new district proposed to be formed? What will be the cost of the fees, assessment, taxes, and bonds that can be, um, posed to the new residents in this district? All of these questions could have been answered in the update of the general plan. Because all of these answers were known during the municipal service review that was sent out by Lavco in July of, um, 2018. So, all of the answers are known. And I, you know, I just, it's just really disappointing, um, to, to hear these residents in Laguna West, the issues are, are the same. It's all about transparency. It's all about claims that you don't know, that you didn't have any control, when in fact you do. We elect you to be in charge and be in control.
Please, ma'am, thank you.
I'd like to close with just one quote, and I've closed with it before. This should be simple. Good governance, monitored by civilians, transparency, unfettered access to information that's in the public interest. Why is that so hard to achieve? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Lynn Wheat. Following Lynn Wheat is Barbara Patterson.
And Ms. Wheat submitted a series of, um, two PowerPoint presentations. I'll pull one of them up and I think she's going to go through both of them during her presentation.
Okay, got it.
Uh, let me pull it up on the screen. There we go.
Good evening. My name's Lynn Wheat and I'm a long, lifelong resident of Elk Grove and a participant in our local government since we became a city in 2000. Up, you will see a slide. This is the California School Nurse Organization Annual Conference that was hosted down in Monterey. And this is the reason that I was not at the last city council meeting, because I was down there. And I want you to see that what it says is, "Building a healthy community. One student, one family at a time." I have been coming before you for years and have been dismissed numbers of times, more than I could count, but I keep coming, even when those have told me, "Why do you waste your time?" It is one student, one family, one future child, one future elderly person that I keep coming before you. It is your policies that bother me. Next slide.
That one, if you could just hit the dial down, that'll.
Oh, okay.
I don't quite have that much control. There we are.
It is your land use planning decisions and city development impacts that the health of our children and future generations is at risk. It is addressed in what we've been discussing since 2015 and even before. It was discussed in our original general plan. Air quality, traffic, and safety. And they all are not good. And they're not going to be good for the future generations because of the policies that you five determine. You're supposed to protect the residents of this community. You're supposed to protect the safety of our children. And when you continually bow down to the developer interests who contribute to your campaigns, we as residents lose. When you refuse to separate the bike lanes from our busy streets, it is not safe for children to ride. I want you to read these statistics. We have obesity rates that are not good in our children. We have diabetes rates that are not good in our children. We have asthma rates that are not good in our children. And I believe, as a medical profession, it is dependent upon you to make better land use decisions for us and for the future. Your policies do not do that. And I've come before you, I've been called all kinds of names. Matter of fact, I had a developer send me a threatening email at my work. I let it go. I moved on because I refuse. My life is more than just now. I believe I've been able to do all of this, not because I don't have a life, it's because I follow my faith. And I refuse to give up on these things. They're important to what I believe is what we were supposed to do, which is to be good stewards. I'm trying my best, I do not believe any of you are trying your best.
Thank you, ma'am.
This is it. This is it. This is what I've been working on. It is a lot to get through. I want to know if all of you have read all of this, if you went through every single page of the documents on which you'll be voting on tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Barbara Patterson. Following Barbara is Kathy Engel.
I am Barbara Patterson and I want you to know that the following statement is my personal opinion based on my observations of what has been transpiring in the last two months by the Elk Grove City Government. I have lived here for almost 10 years, but have extended family that have lived here since the 1930s. My grandchildren and great-grandchildren have attended school here and are attending school here. My daughter is buried in the cemetery here. I am in, I am here to demand that Mayor Steve Lee and Councilman Darren Swin and any other member of this council who has received campaign funds or other gifts, whether monetary or otherwise, from Alvin Chung, CNU, or any management staff member or investor of CNU to at least recuse themselves from being involved in any way in the process of the application and approval of this monstrous hospital. Thank you. By your constant public comments showing how much you support this project, you have made it clear that you don't care what it will do to the housing community and the small, small business owners in the Stone Lake Landing. You have accepted large cash contributions to your campaigns and use the CNU facility for personal events. This is a direct violation of the Elk Grove Code of Ethics as follows. Under responsibility, I understand that the community expects me to serve with dignity and respect as well as be an agent of the democratic process. I avoid actions that might cause the public to question my independent judgment. I do not use my office or the resources of the city for personal or political gain. I am a prudent steward of public resources and actively consider the impact of my decisions on the financial and social stability of the city and its citizens. You have accepted this code of ethics. It is interesting that Alvin Chung made large contributions to both Steve Lee and Darren Swin during the campaigns for mayor in that way, ensuring that he had the mayor in his pocket, no matter who won. Because of the, because of these series, serious violations, I urge you to resign as mayor and councilman to avoid the embarrassment. To avoid the embarrassment of being forced out of office for cause, so the people of Elk Grove can legally vote in, hopefully ethical and truthful city leaders.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Kathy Engel. Following Kathy. Following Kathy is Aaron Herman.
And Ms. Engel submitted two videos, but I'll go by your cue as to when you want me to pull those up.
Okay, thank you very much. You didn't start me yet. I'm upset. Before they started, I, you know, I don't think it's fair that I have to use my public comment to talk about what I'm going to talk about, and I'm upset. And I might cry. I'd like to show you a video of what took place when Steve Lee was having his big "Thank You for Electing Me" event. There are many citizens who aren't comfortable with Steve Lee's cozy relationship with Alvin Chung, CEO of CNU. Alvin Chung has donated large sums of money to Steve Lee, and based on what we have heard from Steve Lee's own mouth, is, he's very much in favor of this project. So we know, you'll probably vote for it, no matter how much it really stinks. Your arrogance, and I really wish you would pay attention to me when I'm speaking to you. I think that is so disrespectful when you look down like that.
Ma'am, I'm taking notes. Please continue.
The arrogance of having the party at CNU and then pretending that you are impartial, and that was some party. It looked like a giant wedding. It was further evidence that you don't even care about the optics of it. It's just, you know what? That's the way it is. So our group, which is called NEST, it stands for Neighbors Ensuring Stone Lake Transparency, we decided to protest. One reason was because we have so many people in our group that voted for you, lots, more than didn't. They thought that your supporters should actually know the truth. We're a grassroots organization. We made our own signs. Our kids came out with us. Those of us who brought our children thought it was a wonderful example of what our country stands for. We are blessed to have a constitution that protects our right to disagree. And protest in front of a mayor's party. We had people honking and waving and giving us the thumbs up sign. Believe it or not, some of your guests even signed our petition. Fox 40 and Elk Grove News were there, as was Lance Armstrong from the Citizen. An officer from Elk Grove Police Department stopped by, and Elk Grove News was there. Elk Grove PD, I heard that they were called. They just, he just wondered what was going on. It was his territory to patrol. Channel 13 stopped by too. Paul Wegstaff stopped by with some water for us, and he joked, we jokingly asked him if he poisoned it, and he laughed. I was hoping he'd say inconceivable, but he didn't. I did not feel threatened by him, even though he is Alvin Chung's attorney, and I know that. I didn't feel the need to take his picture or video him. Then a man in a blazer, who was what I can only describe as puffed up, like what an animal does when it wants to seem bigger, came walking through quickly and taking pictures of our entire group. And I lost my place. When he came out, I don't think he took pictures of the men, because he said the men were congregated, like they usually do, and he seemed to walk by them. They were over by my car, which is in the photographs. And I'd like to continue, please. Would you like to ask me a question about how, the rest of my story, so I can continue?
Please continue, but please wrap up as well.
When, he, but he might have, he might have taken pictures of the men. I honestly don't know. He began taking pictures of all of us, and I asked who he was. He wouldn't tell me. He said he has a right to be there and a right to take pictures. Then he went down to where all the kids were, and I wasn't cool with that. I ran back to my car and grabbed my phone and caught up with him at the corner of West Tarran and Riparian. The more the women said to stop taking pictures of their kids, the more he seemed to do it. I asked him several times, "Who are you and what are, why are you taking pictures of people's children?" And he would not answer me. He said he didn't have to answer me, and he was very aggressive. So I started videotaping him, and that's what you're going to see right now. And there is a gentleman who will yield his time to me. Can you do the longer one?
Let me pull that up.
There's no sound.
It's just bad.
He would not tell us who you were before, though.
Yeah, well, you don't, you're not required to.
I know you're not required to, but you know, when you're taking pictures of people's children...
I'm taking pictures of everyone around here.
And people's children.
It's everyone around here.
And people's children.
Well, if they see, if they're in the area next to anyone else, that's the way it is. So they're actively in the area, so I'm just taking pictures.
What's the reason for you taking?
Keeping track.
Oh, you're keeping track?
No different than you're taking photos of me, right?
You kind of, I mean, you came into our, you know...
This "our," this is the public thoroughfare.
That wasn't for pornography, child pornography purposes, was it? Taking pictures of those kids? Because you didn't take pictures of all of us adults.
I took pictures of everybody.
Did you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because if it ends up in a, on a site that exploits those children...
That's probably an accusation, then.
Yeah, it is.
I don't think it was an accusation.
I'm taking pictures of everybody.
But someone else's child?
I'm taking pictures of everybody.
That's a little odd.
But they're my children.
And you got a picture.
They don't, you need my attention for that.
Yeah.
I'm taking pictures of everyone on the sidewalk.
That's not the point.
Do you work for Steve?
I'm here, walking on the sidewalk, taking photos, as you are taking photos. Very simple, very legal.
We're not taking photos of other people's kids.
You're taking photos of me.
You're not a kid.
No, I'm not.
This is a representation of Steve. You don't have the parent's permission.
Are you a representative of his?
I am someone that works for many people.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It's a clear representation.
And there we can see who he works for. And I guess he used to work for Gary Davis, too. I think this speaks for itself. No citizen should have a government official taking their pictures, or anybody who works for our government, and saying they are keeping track of you. There was no doubt that this was meant to threaten us and intimidate us. The fact that he doesn't get why it's not okay to take photographs of young children is also really disturbing. We don't know him. Maybe he saw an opportunity where he thought the adults were not paying attention to the children, and he thought they were distracted, and he could grab one of those kids. We don't know. It's hard to tell in a split second, but mothers don't wait around to find out what something, somebody's doing when it comes to their kids. I'd also like to add that as a person of Jewish descent, I'm particularly disturbed by a public employee wanting to keep track of me. I think we all know what happened the last time the government did that. There has been a lot said about it, about if he was or was not threatening. I think the video shows that he did, in fact, come toward me, causing me to back up. And there's just another split second video. I am appalled at the lack of response of this council. I emailed every single one of you, and Darren was the only one who had the courtesy to even reply. Even if this is an internal HR thing, I think you owe it to the citizens who have to call the police, because they're afraid, in their own city, because you sent a thug after us. He saw my car. He knows where I live. Do you know what that feels like? How would you like it if that was your wife or your daughter? Even after calling the police, I wasn't sure how long your reach was, and I'm still not convinced, after hearing that it was reviewed for less than an hour, and, and, oh, there's nothing to it. As far as I'm concerned, I do not think that Ty Sorsy is fit to work for our city. I don't think he should have an employee badge to get in anywhere. He clearly has no boundaries and can't be in a position of trust. I'm asking now that he be dismissed immediately and that a formal apology be issued to every person who is terrorized by his actions. And I'd like to add that a member of my family had to go back into therapy because they have anxiety. And I think we already read the code of ethics, and we know what stands on that. And I would like to know if any of you, you know, you talked to Catherine Yang when she was up here. If you'd like to say anything, I would love to hear from you.
Ma'am, I have a response, but we have a number of speakers, so I'll respond after all the speakers. So I hope you're okay with that, but...
Yeah, as long as it's on the record.
I do take this very seriously.
Let's hear it now.
Let's hear it now.
Well, the only problem is, we have other speakers who've signed up and out of courtesy.
Did anybody like to yield their time for the response?
No, no, he has time. He's in charge of it.
So, members of the council, are you okay with me responding now?
Yeah, I'll just tell you, Kathy, that I think several of us, if not all of us, have talked to the mayor behind the scenes to express that it's his problem that he has to deal with, so if he's willing to do that now. Kathy, I don't, I apologize. I don't recall getting an email, because I'm very diligent about responding. But I, I kind of always use the premise that you praise in public and you criticize in private. I've had conversations with the mayor about the situation, as well as city staff, and I'm not pleased with it.
And Kathy, you saw my response.
Yes, and Darren was very, you know, and I understand that there are issues, but, you know, to just acknowledge that it happened and that, that it wasn't okay.
Right. So, gentlemen, are you okay with me doing a quick response? Well, let me just say, you know, I'm sorry that you're, this actually happened. Ty Sorsy does work for me. He works three hours a week as a external liaison outside of the mayor's office. He gets paid $12 an hour. Now, in his capacity, on this particular day, he was not working for me as a city employee. Nonetheless, that doesn't really excuse that particular behavior. And as you've seen my statements that I've sent to all the news venue within the city of Elk Grove, this is something I take very seriously. You know, I certainly did not know that he was doing that, and it's something that I have been in conversation with the city attorney and also city manager on an appropriate action. Nonetheless, I have to stop there, because this, again, is an HR issue, and I have to respect his privacy as well. This is, you know, goes to the core of who I am. When I started politics, I started as an activist. I was picketing. I know exactly what you guys are going through, and I embrace the fact that you guys are doing it. I had no issues with it. I, in fact, I encourage the fact that, that citizens in the community are standing up and voicing their opinion. And the truth of it is that I have never kept it a secret, that I, all the campaigns I do receive contribution, but, you know, I'm sure as the city attorney, as advisors, that's a separate thing. You're more than welcome to criticize me on that, and I welcome that, and that's how it's been going on. But, you know, it's, in terms of the location and, and why we have the celebration there, it was a place in which they offered. It was not, the intent of it was not to discuss the hospital, as many of the attendees that were there came inside as well. This was a public event, and we welcome everyone. Mr. Wegstaff, who came out and offered the water, it was under my request. I'd said, "You know what? We should be more than willing to invite some of the members of the public to come in. This is not restrictive. This is for the community, and we would, you know, welcome everyone." His suggestion was, "Hey, are you okay with me taking some of your water outside?" I said, "That's fine." And so I'm glad that you guys are out there. It's important for us to have a transparent dialogue about this. This process is very long. As I've detailed in the statement which I release, this is not over. This is just the beginning. And for each and every one of you who have concerns over it, I encourage you to continue that. Now, in the matter of Mr. Ty Sorsy, that is still being looked at. There are no actions at the moment.
Does he work for CNN, CNU also?
No, he does not. Well, that I know, he does not.
So he, so, so he is going to be continuing representing my city, and I get to pay his...
No, I did not say that. I said that we are looking at it, and an action has not been taken.
Oh, okay. That there, somebody's looking at it.
Yes. Between myself, the city attorney, and the city manager, we are examining the details. And one of the videos that you submitted, we have not seen, and so that also is additional information for, for, for me.
Okay.
The video, the video doesn't show him bumping up against one of the neighbors that was there, so that's...
Yeah, we didn't have that on video.
So public info, you should bump up against another public info.
So if you have additional videos, please send them in my direction. I do take this very seriously.
And I would like to acknowledge that it, that, because a lot of people in the city are saying, "Well, he has a right. It's a sidewalk." Doesn't matter if it's legal. It was inti, it was intended to intimidate. Whether you sent him or not, it was pretty clear.
I understand.
Okay.
Right. It is very ser, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Aaron Herman. Following Aaron is Mark Graham.
So I thought I'd yield my time to Kathy, but if I may, I can say a few words, or...
Okay, just go ahead and, you know, make it quick, yeah.
Okay, sure. So I've never been up to address you guys before. I would just like to say that I've been a 19-year resident of Elk Grove and a 13-year resident of Stone Lake. I've been raising my four children in the Stone Lake community. It's such a wonderful community, and I think that, I'd just like to say that it's not who's right in this, it's what's right. And that hospital and that location is not right, and I think you all know it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Graham. Following Mark Graham is Trina Priest.
And Mr. Graham submitted a PowerPoint presentation, and I believe he has a video. It's about six minutes, but I believe he has, he's working in conjunction with some other speakers in order to have, to request that that video be played. But I'll start off with the PowerPoint presentation that was submitted by Mr. Graham.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Mark Graham, and I live in Elk Grove. This is a, we are showing this documentary film, Generation Zapped, this Friday night, 7 o'clock, at the Elk Grove Public Library. There are some flyers that look just like this, that are on the table at the back of the room. Feel free to pick one up. I'm inviting everybody, come see it. It's about the hazards of living in the wireless age and what we can do to protect ourselves from the electromagnetic radiation that we're all exposed to. Once again, here's the dates. Friday, March, tonight, sorry, this Friday, then the 15th, then the 29th at 7 o'clock. Okay, please be there. And these are a couple of images from the film. Now, on September 26, the council directed the staff to hire somebody for the community workshop that was neutral, unbiased, and an expert in the field. Expert, excellent advice. The staff failed to do that, and you did not get that. I am asking the council to direct the staff to hire exactly that type of person to make one 20-minute presentation to the council at a future meeting on the same issues: health effects of electromagnetic radiation exposure and federal communications commission regulation. That is something you can do. Somebody that's not paid, that does not work for AT&amp;T and Verizon, and do not let AT&amp;T pay for the person this time. All right. The, I am also recommending that the city should create a webpage on 5G, and this is to facilitate the flow of information, both directions, from the city to residents and from residents to the city. Right now, you are not doing that. The vast majority of people in this city have no idea that there are proposals on the table, and your staff has been negotiating with the carriers for 18 months, and it's all happening behind closed doors. They deserve to know. The city does not know what the residents want, and the residents do not know what the city is considering. So, it would serve two purposes. It would change both of those: enable the residents to know what the city is considering and enable the city to know what its residents want and do not want. It's simple. You say, "This is what we're considering." You, residents of Elk Grove, what do you want? There's nothing wrong with that. The city manager is reluctant to do it? I don't think he has a good reason. I think that he wants to wait until the legally required Brown Act notices, which are only 72 hours prior to the planning commission meeting and council meeting at which this will be voted on, and give the required, you know, that's nothing. The Brown Act does not require you to solicit community input, but you should. And it's a complicated issue. What if the people can't make those meetings? You've heard people complain that, these are some of the things that residents do not know, none of this stuff. You've heard people complain about the, the lack of information from the city to them, especially, you know, residents nearby, about what's going on with the new hospital. If you continue on this course and you do not tell people what's going on regarding your 5G policy, and then you vote on it, and then there start being 5G cell antennas put up right out in front of people's homes, people are going to complain. You'll have 10 times as many complaints as you've had now, at least, over the university, because this is a citywide thing. This is what you could put on the webpage about the community workshop. All these are doc, the video, the presentations done by the staff, and so on. These are public documents. It doesn't matter that things are still being negotiated, because some of these things have already been done. And lastly, there's precedent for this. I think it was 2018, but the Cassuna Services District was considering, they wanted, they were considering doing some improvements and upgrades to the parks, you know, investment in the parks. And so CSD partnered with the city to actively tell people in the community what was on the table and to ask people's opinions. Vice Mayor Soon and the city manager at the time, Laura Gill, went to the Rotary Club, among others, and did that. Here's what we're considering. What do you want? That's great. That's community outreach. That's engagement with the community. There's no good reason for not doing that on 5G, and I respectfully ask the council to direct the staff to do that, starting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Thank you, Mr. Graham. Our next speaker is Trina Priest. Following Trina is Teresa Hansen.
I'm Teresa Hansen, and I've lived in Elk Grove for 27 years. Tonight, we're showing you a video from a hearing of the United States Senate Commerce Committee on February 6th. In this video, Senator Richard Blumenthal from Connecticut asks the representatives of the wireless industry about the studies that the industry has done, is doing, or has committed to do on the health effects and safety of 5G radiation, and how much money the industry has spent on these studies. And the answer that they give is, "None. Zero studies. Zero dollars." The federal government does not know whether 5G radiation is safe. The wireless carriers do not know. And in the words of Senator Blumenthal, we are, quote, "Flying blind." We're going to start the video with myself, and then a second person will complete it. Who's got that?
Thank you for having this hearing. We've heard from, a lot of witnesses from you today and others previously about the very important potential of 5G technology. It promises to bring us a new era of connectivity with internet speeds as much as five times faster than what we have today with much lower latency, and that's all a good thing. But 5G, as you well know, also uses higher frequency waves that don't travel as far and will rely on a network of hundreds of thousands, potentially millions of small cell sites. And the question then is, are there any health implications, any public safety implications to those additional sites that are likely to be located close to homes, schools, workplaces, and closer and closer to the ground? Correct?
Correct, Senator, yes.
So, in December of 2018, I sent a letter to FCC Commissioner Carr, asking him to cite for me recent scientific studies demonstrating the safety of this technology. What research has been done? Where has it been published and compiled? He has essentially failed to do so, and just echoed the general statements of the FDA, which shares regulatory responsibility for cell phones with the FCC. If you go to the FDA website, pretty unsatisfactory. There basically is a cursory and superficial citation to existing scientific data saying, quote, "The FDA has urged the cellphone industry to take a number of steps, including support additional research on possible biological effects of radio frequency fields for the type of signal emitted by cellphone." I believe that Americans deserve to know what the health effects are, not to prejudge what scientific studies may show.
Yeah, the next speaker, go ahead and pause him.
And they deserve also a commitment to do the research on outstanding questions. So, my question for...
So, Trina Priest is the next speaker?
For you, particularly Mr. Gillen and Mr. Perry. How much money has the industry committed to supporting additional independent research? I stress, independent research. Is that independent research ongoing? Has any been completed? Where can consumers look for it? And we're talking about research on the biological effects of this new technology.
Thank you, Senator. I think, thank you for your focus on the issue. Safety is paramount, and as you alluded to, we rely on the expert agencies, rely on the findings of the FDA and others as to the requirements to keep all of us safe. There are no industry-backed studies, to my knowledge, right now. Happy to visit with you as to what opportunities you think there needs to be more studies, and we're always for more science. We also rely on what the scientists tell us.
So, essentially, the answer to my question, how much money? Zero.
I can, so I'll just only follow up with you, Senator. To my knowledge, there's no active studies being backed by industry today.
Anybody else know of industry commitments to back research, fund it, support it, to ascertain scientifically the health effect?
Senator, I'm not aware either, but I do know that with small cells especially, you're going to have lower power levels. And, of course, as from a carrier perspective, you want to be able to manage interference so that that interference is the lowest interference possible. So, I would, I would think that some of those studies or some of that information could be utilized in looking at the health consequences, but no, I'm not aware of any...
So, there really is no research ongoing? We're kind of flying blind here, so far as health and safety is concerned? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Connie Connolly. Following Connie is Tim Trishall.
I want to thank everybody who read the Code of Ethics. I wrote that back in 2005, and I'll tell you why. It's because the Sacramento County ground jury was tired of Elk Grove City Council members threatening and intimidating citizens, and we thought this would be a way to rein them in if we had a Code of Ethics. As you can see, nothing's changed. But, one of the things that I'm here to talk about is, I also attended the forum last Friday night, and I want to correct a couple of statements made by Gary Davis, our self, his self-anointed mayor emeritus, which is what he calls himself now. Gary went on to say several times that the people that live around the hospital that was approved for Dignity Health had no problem, that, and that's not true. There was plenty of residents who lived there when, or bought homes before the market tanked and housing stopped, that did oppose that hospital, especially the helipad. And he made the comment that afterward, after the market started and houses starting being built again, yes, those people were told that a hospital was going to go in there eventually, maybe, and it was their choice to live there or not. But as you all know, a lot of those houses stood vacant and might be still vacant to this day. So, when we're telling stories, it's incumbent upon us, those of us that have been around a long time, to really say the facts to all the new people like Sarah Johnson, the late Sarah Johnson used to say, "Get involved and stay involved," and we're really proud that you all are. But I have to tell you, it's incumbent on The Usual Suspects, one of your favorite movies, Pat, and those of us that have been around a while, to tell the truth, the absolute truth. Don't pick and choose your facts, like Gary Davis did. And it's really funny that Gary, when he came to Elk Grove in 2004 to run for office, was a man of the people? Well, how, isn't it funny how the man of the people is now a paid consultant for CNU and sold out those very people that he promised to serve? And I will end with this. Paul Lindsey is one of the best public servants we have ever had in this city, and he served proudly on the Planning Commission. But one day, he lost his mind, and he said to the people in Gresha, and those of you who don't know, Gresha is the longest HOA in this city, in the rural area, of which I am a member, and a proud resident of Elk Grove for over 40 years. He said to us one night, "You people over in Gresha need to get a life." My HOA president stood up and said, "Mr. Lindsey, this is our life, and it's their lives too." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Tim Trishall. Following Tim is Amanda Hickson.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor and members. My name is Tim Trishall. The clerk has some handouts, and I'm here to share a situation with you and seek your counsel. I have the photographs that you, you have, were taken in my backyard, and they're, this is a very young beehive that was constructed on, it was, I found it in a, in my backyard and removed it. And the reason it's there, and there have been other swarms in my backyard, and I live in a residential area in Elk Grove, Castle Bridge Court, it's a residential zoned area. And, but my neighbor, and this is an issue that started, I think, a few years ago when the general plan, a limitation on beehives in residential areas was eliminated, thus allowing unlimited numbers of beehives, as I'm told by city staff and others. Not everybody does this, but my understanding is, is that the general plan and the codes don't have any limitations on the number of beehives that can be put on a residential property. I believe in, believe in bees. I think if your, if your management is great, honey's great, bees should, are necessary for pollination and many other things. It's just a matter of time, place, and manner. So, in residential properties, and this property, the property next door to me is the other photograph, and this is an example of the number of beehives that are on a fifth acre, an R5-zoned residential property. In and out, coming in from the street, basically managed. The owner, I've talked to, and he's told me that, first of all, I have to prove that any problems in my property are his bees. So, and I said, "Look, I see them coming over, and they, you know, when they need water, they come on my lawn." They are, when they're not getting enough nutrition, they swarm any flowers in my yard, and other neighbors, too. So, my, this is a concern. I don't think it's intentional not to have some kind of limitation. Most cities that have agriculture close to them have limitations. For example, Yuba City prohibits hives in the city unless they're used for pollination. Okay? Can come in. Agriculture needs them, they can come in, they get used, pollinate the row crops, pollinate the almonds, pollinate whatever, but then they have to be removed. Roseville has limitations on proximity and numbers of hives. Sacramento City has limitations on numbers of hives in residential areas. So, Elk Grove doesn't have it, from what I understand. So, I want, I just want to make you aware of this, and the risk, the risks are this kind of thing in homes. Fortunately, I found it and eliminated it, but next time, and this, we're entering the swarming season, hives that are not managed well, and it's kind of a mistake that, is that my time up?
It is, but go ahead and wrap up, please.
Just, just, we're in, we're in a swarm season, when hives that are not managed well will split, and the queen will take a group of bees and go and swarm, and then look for another place to live. Attics are great places in homes and other structures, and so there's a high risk when you have a high amount of beehives in a residential area. So, I'd like your guidance on how to, I'd like to see some changes made to the restrictions, not elimination, just some changes in residential areas only. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Amanda Hickson. Following Amanda is Michael Manaski.
This is the first time I've come, and I wasn't going to come. I was going to have Kathy speak on my behalf, but I decided that it was best if I did this myself. It was my children who were photographed the other day. They're 10 and 7. My daughter was the one that pointed it out. She's 7. And she was like, "Mommy, why is that man taking my picture?" I was, a word I shouldn't say, here. Regardless of the legality of Mr. Sorsy's presence and the right to photograph the people holding the protest, ethics need to be questioned in this situation. As Americans, we have the right to peacefully assemble and question the decisions of our lawmakers. As a mother, I see value in showing this to my children. It is American value that we should all uphold. For a city employee to attempt to intimidate and catalog people exercising this right for unknown reasons is infuriating, and it should be stopped immediately. Any pictures obtained should be destroyed, especially those of my children. My husband is with my children right now, and he sent a statement as well. He said, "As a father, I have to question why my children were being photographed by a random man in the crowd. In today's society, you never know the ulterior motives of some individuals. This gentleman eventually claimed he was there working for the city. Why he needs to take pictures of children is beyond me. I'm not necessarily making accusations, but from day one, the city and CNU have been conducting business in a manner that raises huge concerns. Between their poor communication and lack of transparency, our city leaders should be questioned. Why are they really pushing for this hospital to be built? I have been working in the medical field for over 20 years. From my perspective, it is obvious that this hospital is not needed in this part of Elk Grove. My wife and I have been using South Sacramento Kaiser for over 10 years for our children and for ourselves without any issues. Even emergent situations are not an issue since it is a short drive, even from Stone Lake, especially now with the new I-5 off-ramp from Cassounas River. There are already plans for Dignity to build a hospital down the street less than three miles away. Why build CNU and have yet another hospital within a three-mile epicenter? It seems as though our city officials have ulterior motives, and Elk Grove residents should demand to hear what they are. I also work in the healthcare field. I work at South Sacramento Kaiser. I was there when they turned into a trauma unit. I have no idea how CNU plans to have that approved. I was there for all of the approval processes from the county and the state for a trauma center. Kaiser had a hard time getting that. So, how we think this is going to happen for a hospital that has never had any experience building a hospital, managing a hospital, I have no idea. I also know how medical coverage works. I asked the question at the meeting the other night, which Mr. Chung really had a hard time answering. I said, "Kaiser, Sutter, Dignity, all these different places are the insurance carriers for the people of Elk Grove. How are they going to retain patients past the acute stages of an emergency? They're not. All of those insurance carriers are going to repatriate their patients to their respective hospitals. Nobody is going to pay CNU to provide care." And he says he hopes that they will allow for that. I highly doubt it. We're less than 5, 10 miles away, maybe. There's no way. It seems like a very bad business plan.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Michael Manaski. Following Michael Manaski is Stacy Anderson.
It appears the mayor is in the spotlight again. Mayor Lee is either clueless about his aides' behaviors, or he fully supports Mr. Sorsy's actions. Those actions include passing an automatic rifle as an award to former Mayor Gary Davis, endorsing sister-cityhood with a Nigerian prince precisely five years ago to this day, in whose province the murderous thugs continue to operate the notorious anti-West Islamic terrorist group Boko Haram. And just this last weekend, bodily forcing his way through a small group of Elk Grove residents in a legitimate, quiet protest outside the mayor's election celebration party hosted by a private school of pharmacies seeking to build a controversial, controversially located hospital. Oh, and let's not forget the pictures he menacingly took of the children of the protesters. Sorsy has passed professional ties to Beal Air Force Base, known for maintaining unmanned drone reconnaissance attack planes at which anti-war activists regularly demonstrate. Mayor Lee is to Donald Trump as Ty Sorsy is to National Security Advisor John Bolton, insofar as Lee and Trump are both chief executives, and Sorsy and Bolton have executed disastrously failed public policies expounded by their bosses. One can only wonder what the future holds for this duo in pending embarrassments to the city. Elk Grove's Mayor Lee has been admonished by his city council colleagues regarding his overuse of taxpayer-paid personal staff and intentions to pad his own wealth, making the mayor's office a paid position. It's time for the mayor to abandon these power-grabbing pipe dreams, and it's time for the council to strip him of these perks. It's an unanswered question why the police, who were present during these incidents, did not arrest Mr. Sorsy for bodily pushing his way against at least one of the protesters and photographing their kids, and then also asking him to show what he had done on his phone. Mr. Sorsy should be in jail, not a city employee paid with taxpayer payer funds. Bullying behavior is unacceptable, whether actively executed by Mr. Sorsy or passively by Mayor Lee through his employees. It is also disturbing that the police seem to have looked askance at Mr. the police seem to have looked askance at Mr. Sorsy's assault and battery upon otherwise peacefully protesting group. Are these the methods that the city should utilize in a conversation with its residents over making space for a private for-profit hospital? Compassionate and cooperative people want to know. And I'd like to add, too, that I've worked in the health field, and I can say to you that if a health practitioner, a nurse, a physician, or anyone working in a hospital says to a patient something that is, that it's a requirement, you know, "You will take this pill," and then forces the pill upon them, they have not only committed assault with those words, but they've committed battery by touching that person. So I can tell you that we understand what assault and battery is, but I don't think the police department does. And so I'd like to have that looked into as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Stacy Anderson. Following Stacy Anderson is Mark Doty.
Good evening. I'm Stacy Anderson. I haven't stood up here in front of the city council or the planning commission before, although in the last 48 hours, you might have been hearing my voice on a certain video. However, I do want to stand up tonight because as a co-founder with Kathy Engel of Neighbors Insurance in Stone Lake Transparency, which is also NEST, it's a coalition of concerned citizens from all across Elk Grove, not just Stone Lake, Lakeside, Laguna West, but it goes all the way out to Sheldon, goes all the way out to Old Elk Grove and beyond because people feel concerned as well about the CNU hospital. At the December 20th press conference, our community, actually the whole city, was blindsided about plans for a hospital to be built in what is now Stone Lake Landing. It's home to several small businesses that have taken a chance on our community and have become our cherished neighbors. The proposed medical complex would destroy those businesses as we know them. We've heard comments about, "Oh, it's only six or seven." No, it's not. That's in the first phase. It's up to 15, including all data. By the time this mayor may not be completed, which according to former Mayor Gary Davis could take up to 10 years. At an information session regarding this project, it was stated by a city official that this would be the largest undertaking of its kind in our city. That sounds impressive, but in reality, it's alarming because the city doesn't exactly have a portfolio of success with major projects. I'm reminded of the last major project, which is not so affectionately called the Elk Grove Ghost Mall. The failure of that project alone should be the signal of a huge red flag waved in front of the proposed California North State University Medical Complex. With no clear financial plan being presented to the public, lack of transparency, and with CNU having no experience whatsoever with developing and running such an enormous facility, it is reckless to sacrifice our cherished small businesses, our neighbors, for the chance of hitting black on the roulette wheel of financial health. This is not a time to be chasing the city's losses, as they say in Las Vegas. This is not a time to gamble the financial well-being and the reputation of our city on an organization that has zero track record of success and has displayed an egregious lack of transparency thus far. I ask you to consider, what do you want your legacy to be? Do you want to be known as the politician who risks the financial well-being of their city on another likely-to-fail project, which is probably going to become the Elk Grove Ghost Hospital, or do you want to have your legacy be that of a representative of our city who values the efforts and contributions of its small businesses and who takes to heart the concerns and well-being of your constituency? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mark Doty. Following Mark is Mimi DeVille.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor. I wanted to talk on two topics, and one will be the hospital. I'll save that for the end. Second, I actually sent an email off to Ryan Chapman, the engineer for traffic. He's awesome, by the way. I'm hoping to get a response back. But can we get some left-turn lanes where we have a left blinking yellow light? I'm tired of sitting at all these lights around town. Laguna Boulevard, they had a red light, nobody's coming from, you know, the opposite direction, and you're just sitting there. Old Creek and Laguna Boulevard is a perfect example. I lived there for 11 years, and it was a nightmare, sitting at this light forever. Anyway, they do it all over the state. I don't know why. We don't have any that I'm aware of in the city. Anyway, just wanted to throw that out there. Anyway, so Ryan's all over it. So anyway, I just wanted to bring it up here. So on the hospital, I wanted to say a couple of things. One, I went to the meeting that was on Friday night, and Darren, you did an excellent job, and it was a hostile, kind of a hostile environment. You did the best you could do under the circumstances. A couple of things to just note is, you guys look like you're wanting to approve this. I mean, when the announcement came out, I believe most, if not all of you, were standing at CNU's campus, you know, just the optics. I understand the process of how this has to go through approvals and so on, but the optics just don't look good. In fact, I went to home, looked at the news that night, and said, "Okay, we're going to talk to somebody that's in favor of the hospital and somebody that's against it," and Darren was the one that was talking in favor of it, even though you weren't really, but, you know, the way they cut up news and so on. Anyway, just wanted to throw that out there, that the optics don't look good. The day that this was announced, one thing that really got me is just the location. It's just a weird location. I mean, sure, they want to put it there, it's private property and so on, but it's the very western edge of Elk Grove, way to the south. As a member on the Trails Committee and an advocate for active transportation, I don't know how you get there from pocket area without going on I-5. And at hospitals, especially a hospital such as this, it's going to be a trauma center, you're going to see a lot of people on bikes, homeless population, people, you know, elderly, indigent, et cetera. It's, you know, it's just a weird spot. There's the buffer lands from the sewer treatment plant that are, you know, a barrier to that. You know, there's no bus lines over there. Buses can be, you know, rerouted. I'm sure there's some things that can be done there. But anyway, I just thought it's just a weird spot. And then finally, because I want to be respectful of time, if this was Kaiser or Sutter or Dignity, I think you'd get a lot less pushback. This CNU outfit just seems kind of fly-by-night. You know, it's their business model, and if they want to go for it, but, you know, I think you'd get a lot less pushback if you were working with one of those other organizations. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mimi DeVille. Mimi DeVille. Following Mimi is Randy Becker.
Hi there. Haven't seen you guys in a long time. I'm back. Okay. I think you'd be hard-pressed to find many people who do not expect integrity and transparency from our elected officials. It's one thing to campaign on a dream of bringing a hospital to Elk Grove, Mr. Mayor. It's a completely different animal when you're already meeting and making promises to that hospital and intentionally wait until after elections to announce it to the affected residents. You knew about this for at least a year. You were elected to represent us, and that responsibility encompasses open communication. We have newsletters, we have plenty of locations to host neighborhood town halls. By the way, thank you, Darren, for stepping up and doing that. That's something I would have expected the mayor to do. Is it too much to expect the mayor, the highest elected position in the city, to know the communities he represents before imposing his will on us? I live in Lakeside, and I'd like to give a little bit of insight to what drove me to purchase a home in Lakeside in 1999. I bought a lot in a master-planned community. Lakeside is built around a quiet lake with shaded jogging paths, small neighborhood businesses, community parks, a smart growth plan, and easy access to the freeway. It was the perfect place to raise a family and have a smart commute channel with I-5. Stone Lake was built across the road in a similar manner a few years later, but sits next to the Wildlife Preserve. Both of our communities border Elk Grove Boulevard, both are governed by HOAs, and both communities rely on that access to I-5 for commuting. Did you know the entrance to the Stone Lake Wildlife Preserve is right at the end of Elk Grove Boulevard, and it's right where it'll be walking distance from where this 12-story thing is proposed to go? Sorry, I'm a little bit upset, so I'm getting worked up here. Did you know our commute corridor is already congested at 6:30 a.m.? The number of cars entering I-5 from Elk Grove Boulevard exceeds the capacity of the freeway. High rises and medical offices were not part of any plan for this community. In fact, I believe that hospitals are prohibited by the current plan. I don't want to imply that I can't accept or understand that change happens, but change must be reasonable, well-planned, and fit within the neighborhood scheme. Changing our master-planned communities into a biotech district is not reasonable and does not fit into our neighborhood scheme. It's not in the city's general plan either, but I understand you are proposing that plan, changing that plan to designate portions of our community as employment centers, which would enable a hospital, just one more minute, to replace a retail center. I shouldn't have had to read a 500-page document to learn that, and I shouldn't have to hear it from my more woke neighbors. Transparency means you tell us before your friends buy the empty lot across from the preschool. Transparency means you tell us you're negotiating with Alvin Chung and friends to rezone Stone Lake Landing before half of Elk Grove reelected you. Why didn't you disclose it? Why didn't you tell us you wanted to change our community into a biotech district? Why can't you answer if the project is financed by foreign investments? CNU is already paying businesses off and proceeding as if this is a done deal. That makes me wary. And it makes me wonder if we're just going through a fruitless process of assessing environmental impact and seeking public input if you've already green-lighted this 12-story building smack dab where we enter and exit an already overcrowded freeway. And of course, there's a small chance that this plan is rejected, and then we're left with another ghost mall because they already kicked the tenants out. Forgive me if it seems like I'm thinking the worst will happen, but it has happened, and we've lived with that mistake for 10 years already. We're upset about this. We have a right to express our viewpoints. We have a right to peacefully protest without city officials attempting to intimidate us. I'd like to know why our external affairs liaison was sent out to photograph and track our families at a peaceful protest. Are you putting the photos in a lineup book? Are you creating a dossier of citizens who don't agree with you? Or are you planning to bully us into submission? What were you thinking? I really want to know. Those are my questions. I'd like answers, and I'd like you to communicate your plans in plain English to the residents impacted by your plan. Thank you. I'm sorry, one more thing. On the way over here, I was driving down Big Horn, and I suddenly looked up and noticed there's a surgical center there? And it's like, wow, and there's Sutter over there, and there's this big empty lot at the end of the block. There's your biotech district. What made you think it was okay to plop it down in the middle of master-planned communities? It fits over there by the other medical places. There's no backyards to look into. There's no upset residents. It's a medical industry. Why can't you tell your friends to...
Move it.
Move it! Put it over there. Don't start digging up the ground, which, by the way, they're already doing. You keep telling us this isn't a done deal, but they already paid to move the barber shop, they're buying them all this new stuff, they closed off the parking lot, and we're digging into the soil. So they're proceeding as if this is a done deal. And I feel like it is because you're sneaking changes into the general plan that would make it okay to rezone it without anybody knowing. Am I paranoid? Is that what's going on? Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Randy Becker. Following Randy is Sonia Valverde.
First of all, I want to thank Mr. Soon for having the town hall meeting. To be truthful, a number of community members approached Darren and asked for that town hall meeting. He didn't say that the other day, but that's the truth. A few weeks ago, I burnt your guys' ears over this issue. Welcome to the new norm. Mayor, the honeymoon is over. I didn't vote for you. I respect you as a person, but unfortunately, the honeymoon is over. What I learned Friday night was you and your buddy Chung sit on a board together. A few weeks ago, one of their employees stood right here and lied to the community, to the city, and also Mr. Soon, as you called her doctor, as we found out the next day who the hell she really was. I told you guys the other day I was pretty pissed off, but this is what pissed off looks like. And if you guys want to have council meetings till tomorrow morning, welcome aboard, because this is it, folks. Tell the staff to have one item on the agenda: public meeting, public comment. Because I don't know what the hell you expect to get done tonight, besides listen to people. I realize the incident with Sorsy is a private matter. If that happened in the private sector, if I said those words to my former company's customers, I'd have been fired on the spot. There's no question, but government works very slow and privately. I've read your comment, Mr. Mayor, and if you believe in transparency in this process, you will recuse yourself immediately. We're in an election in a year and a half. As you know, I supported another candidate, but I reached out and gave you the opportunity to be my mayor. Unfortunately, you wasted that in my eyes. Lastly, for those of you that believe in by-district voting, you will have two votes, not five. Understand, this project, you would only have two votes. You better start thinking about that because five people represent you, and five people will be able to vote on it. So I'm telling you right now, if you want by-district voting, you will have Mr. Soon and the mayor. The other three gets a free pass. So while you guys want to enjoy the importance of making change to by-district voting, understand what you're asking for, because it will be the biggest bite in your rear end because it will be misused, because all you got to do is look to Sacramento to see the dog and pony show and the circus that comes out of there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Our final speaker is Sonia Valverde.
Good evening. My name is Sonia Valverde, and I've been a resident of Elk Grove since 1993. I, too, live in Stone Lake, and I'm here with my colleagues, the NEST. I'd like to talk to you about the lack of transparency, results in distrust, and a deep sense of insecurity. That is a quote from the Dalai Lama. That quote is particularly true as it pertains to elected officials and the public they serve. Wouldn't you agree? That quote is at the core of NEST's existence. The public has been told by this legislative body, staff and consultants, including former Mayor Gary Davis, that we are in the early-stage process of the proposed CNU hospital, and that you did not know about the project until December of 2018. Even though NEST members have been told that the city council and the staff only knew about the project last December, the following email was disseminated throughout the community. Because of the contents of the email, the public would like to know on record exactly when each member of the Elk Grove City Council was first told, either in private, in a briefing, or at, or any meeting, or through any other form of communication, when each of you first knew about the proposed CNU hospital. The above-mentioned email was sent to a member of the community who pressed City of Elk Grove Economic Developer Darrell Doan at the town hall meeting last Friday about the project after comments initiated after comments initiated by Barry Broome, who is the president and CEO of Greater Sacramento Economic Council, when he publicly stated that he had been talking to Darrell for some time about the project. Mr. Doan's email states, and I quote, "But since you ask, let me be crystal clear. I first became aware of the project as an early concept around July 2017. Let me repeat this critical piece of information." Not shared at the town hall meeting when Mr. Doan was questioned, Mr. Doan knew about the proposed hospital project as far back as July 2017. Continuing with the email from Mr. Doan, "I engaged," quote, "I engaged CNU under a verbal confidential agreement which is standard. I advised them on properly navigating the city's entitlement process. I evaluated and rejected an incentive request, which I referred publicly at the meeting Friday. I engaged them in evaluate other properties, I encouraged them to evaluate other properties, and I advised them strongly that they should engage business and community groups prior to submitting an application. I don't normally talk about confidential business matters unless the law compels me to do so, or until the business makes its plans public, and even then, only if asked. These are the requirements of fulfilling my duties as the city's economic development director while balancing transparency and the law." End of quoted email. In light of this email, we now ask, when each of you advised of the proposed CNU hospital, please answer one by one for the public. Can you answer when each of you were advised?
Ma'am, this is not a conversation. Go ahead and make your statement for the record.
Okay.
We have another speaker behind you.
Well, I will end with a quote from Merrick Garland, and also speak of Nest's core of values, should also be yours. Transparency in government, no less than transparency in choosing government, remains a vital national entrance in democracy. And I would like to know, as I'm sure all of my colleagues would, when each of you were advised of this proposed hospital.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Ken Belt. Mr. Belt.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I've never addressed the council before, and I've never been motivated to, but I'll tell you that video motivated me to. I live in Stone Lake, been there about six years, and spent the last couple of days going over this proposed general plan. So I'm actually here just to speak specifically about that, because I think that it's very apparent from the conversations that I've heard tonight and from what I've read, that the planning for this hospital project has been probably a couple of years in the making, because it's apparent that it will require a significant change in the zoning regulations in the city for this hospital to be possible. And so I have three points that I just want to bring up to make sure that we have, in an open forum, addressed these issues. One is that we, the city is engaging in designating these employment centers, all right? I want the planners to explain to me why you would designate two parcels six miles away from the other areas designated as employment centers, when the purpose of the designation of an employment center is to concentrate large, higher-paying jobs, all right? And so my conclusion is that this is part of a plan to make it easier for us, or for the city council, or for the planners, to transition those two properties into a different zoning, which would make it possible for this hospital to be constructed without special-use permits or any other sort of debate with the public. So when looking at the plan that's presented on the website, it's very confusing as to what those designations are really going to be. There's some serious inconsistencies with the plan that is in place right now as far as light industrial and commercial versus the proposed changes, which would essentially eliminate those limitations. And I don't see anywhere else in the general plan where the city is changing significantly the zoning regulations that affect the property as much as this particular change does. And it's, so anyways, there's that. I also want to note that, as an opposition to this project, that the city even recognizes in 3-2 of the general ledger that higher-intensity built environments have a distinctly different feel and character than surrounding neighborhoods. This project absolutely is characteristic of a project that doesn't belong in a residential neighborhood. You don't see 12-, 13-story buildings surrounded by homes, especially for those of us that bought homes or have lived in the community, and we specifically bought there because it's at the end of a road. We're surrounded by a nature preserve. We don't have to worry about large construction projects or huge amounts of traffic. So in your consideration of the general plan, I really encourage you guys to take a second look and not accept this plan with the changes that you're recommending. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Sonia Valverde, our next speaker. Let's move to the next item.
Take us to Section 6, General Administration Information.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. In the interest of time, I propose to waive my presentation. The information is available on the city website for members of the public that they want to go on and take a look and see what's going on.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Next item.
Take us to Section 7, Council Comments, Reports, and Future Agenda Items.
Okay, let's start off with Member Son.
Thank you, Mayor. Since I keep it brief, since our last meeting, we attended a CCOG board meeting. On the committee I chair, the Policy and Innovation Committee, we are implementing a Green Means Go program. We are advocating to the legislature for funds over a period of time to try to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and bring our entire region into compliance set by the Air Resources Board. Because our region is seen as different from San Francisco and LA, there's recognition of that, we provided some relief, a very mild relief, in exchange for implementing this Green Means Go program, electrifying bus fleets, and doing some other, doing other programs to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And then lastly, I got to join Mayor Steinberg and Congressman Matsui in a press conference for the Ollie Shuttle, which is the first passenger-autonomous vehicle in the Sacramento region. It's built by 3D printing, and the only other one is in Phoenix at this time, so it's quite an honor for Sacramento region to get this program over at Sac State. And that's it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I'll keep my brief due to the time. Attended the STA, attended the Connector JPA meeting, and RT on Monday. The only thing of note for Elk Grove that happened at RT, we'll be discussing later on in tonight's agenda. And then I want to congratulate the folks that got awards today at the PD luncheon, the volunteer and the staff and the officer, Mills. And then I'd ask for council for a future agenda item. I've had some constituents reach out about the potential misuse of language within the rural area that allows for commercial operations on residential parcels, and those being used for event venues. And so I'd like to have that brought back to consider that.
I'll find you with that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Detrick.
As late as we are, I'll pass. Let's move.
Right, I'll go ahead and waive my report as well. Let's move to the next item.
Take us to Section 8, the Consent Calendar Items.
Okay, consent item. Want to open for public comments? I see that there is one speaker lined up to speak, Kathy Engle on 8.3.
I just have a quick thing about meeting minutes, so I'm in favor of these meeting minutes. But there are a lot of minutes that are missing, and there are videos that are missing. And the reason why that's important when you're trying to go back and see what happened and when, you do not know who's talking. And I like to know who's talking. And if there are no minutes and no video, that's a problem. So, and I know that Jason works so hard, and his people work so hard, but I think that needs to be corrected.
Jason's been working on that for over a year. We're doing an advanced, all the current ones, we're accelerating and then working backwards. But Jason, you should have the videos on all of them.
There are some instances where we don't have videos, but I have been working with Ms. Engle in order to pull those up. I know one recently was a technical issue, and we're still working through that. We're also still getting ready to post up.
The planning commission finally came through.
Excellent, so that's good to hear.
So, yeah, that's awesome. It's just that, you know, that's really important when you're trying to play catch-up, because I wasn't there. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Seeing that there are no additional members of the public sign up to speak, I want to close the public comment. Council deliberation and direction.
Mayor, I'll move the consent calendar, but on 8-3, I was not here that day, so I'll abstain from that.
Okay, for the record, Councilmember Detrick is moving the consent item and abstaining from 8.3.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, extension? All right, next item.
That'll take us on to Section 9, our public hearing, starting with Item 9.1, which is a public hearing that was continued from December 12, 2018, to consider an ordinance amending the Elk Grove Auto Mall special planning area.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, members of the city planning commission, Antonio Ablog, project planning, project planner and planning manager for the Elk Grove Auto Mall SPA and conditions amendment. For this project, this project is located in the Elk Grove Auto Mall. I believe we're all familiar where that location is. It pertains to the existing electronic billboard that's out there displaying advertisements along the Highway 99 corridor. For this project, the applicant is requesting to amend the Elk Grove Auto Mall special planning area and the associated conditions of approval. These amendments would amend the SPA, the special planning area, signed document to clarify that up to 10% of the operating time of the billboard could be dedicated to community event advertising at the discretion of the city. More importantly, it would amend Condition 7 of approval as follows. That language has been included in your report, and I'll go through that in a few moments. Just some background on the project. In May 2006, the city council approved the construction of a 55-foot electronic sign. That was the previous generation sign, which has now been replaced. Along with that approval, conditions of approval were approved with that project, including that the sign had to be turned off between the hours of 12:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. At that time, the applicant also offered to provide 10% of the operating time to community event advertising. And the final point, the 40% allowance for off-site advertising, that came up at council discussion. However, it was not translated into the conditions of approval, but we do have record of that conversation and the direction of the city council at the time to provide 40% allowance for off-site advertising. In February 2016, based on a request from the applicant, the construction of an 80-foot electronic sign was approved. However, at that time, based on city codes at the time, a condition was placed on the project that stated advertising would be limited to products and services located within the Elk Grove Auto Mall only. Again, that was based on the overall city ordinance at the time. At this time, the applicant is requesting to modify the special planning area and the conditions of approval. The condition of approval, which disallowed off-site advertising, have been found to be inconsistent with the original council direction that was approved in 2006. Staff has worked with the applicant to a condition language that is agreeable to both the applicant and city staff. The condition reads, "A majority of the advertising on the electronic billboard sign shall be limited to goods and services related to onsite businesses. All advertising should be for businesses located within the city of Elk Grove. Nonwithstanding the foregoing, up to 10% of the operating time shall be dedicated to community event advertising at the discretion of the city." What this condition does, it still requires a majority of the advertising to be onsite of businesses and services related to the Elk Grove Auto Mall, and it splits up the remainder, less than 50%, going to businesses within Elk Grove. However, that remainder percentage is not required to be for businesses in Elk Grove, but it's recommended. And then the condition retains the 10% community event advertising at the discretion of the As this only affects the messaging of the billboard with no physical construction, this is a project that's considered exempt from SEQA. At this time, staff recommends the city council introduce an ordinance finding the project exempt from SEQA and approving the amendment to the Elk Grove Auto Mall special planning area sign criteria, and adopt the resolution also finding the project exempt from SEQA and approving the amendment to the Elk Grove Auto Mall special planning area sign criteria, including the adopted conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, any questions? There are no questions. Thank you, sir. This time, I want to declare public hearing open. We'd like to invite the applicant to come and speak. Take the applicants on here. All right, then, I want to open public comment opportunity. Seeing that no members of the public sign up to speak, one.
There is one.
There is one. Oh, okay.
Oh, can I get to go again? This is so fun. I love being part of the process. I am in favor of having the signs at Elk Grove Auto Mall, because they put up stuff for human trafficking, and that's very important to me. I'm part of SerOptimist, and that is something that can actually stop human trafficking. And I think we're all against that, right?
Yes.
Everybody? Okay. So that's a good public service. So I'm in favor of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing that no members of the public sign up to speak, want to close the public comment. The applicant is here. I'd like to invite the applicant back up again. Seeing that there is nobody present in the audience, I want to declare public hearing close. Council deliberation and direction.
Motion one, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only, an ordinance amending the Elk Grove Auto Mall special planning area, PLNG 18-080, SEQA exempt.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, extension? All right.
Motion two, adopt resolution.
Second.
Okay, got a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, extension? Next item.
Take us on to Item 9.2, which is a public hearing to consider an ordinance approving the Third Amendment to the Sterling Meadows Development Agreement.
Evening, Mayor Lee, members of the city council. Antonio Ablog here again to present Item 9.2, which is the Third Amendment to the Sterling Meadows Development Agreement. This is the third time this is brought before you regarding this item. As far as the project, the request is to modify the terms of the Sterling Meadows Development Agreement. Just outline basically the major points of this Third Amendment. What it does is it moves the completion date of the first park from December 31, 2018, to June 30, 2019. As far as the park itself, its construction is considered complete. However, there is a maintenance warranty period on the landscaping improvements that will not end until that June 30 date. Therefore, the overall park completion will not be considered until then, so that they can make it through that warranty period, but construction is considered complete at this point. The DA is also amended to allow for reimbursement of onsite park improvements consistent with an existing Community Facilities District agreement between the developer and the city. Regarding that park's language, we provided a green sheet to the city council earlier today that modifies the language to clarify CFD fund reimbursement for onsite parking improvements, and also clarifies the acreage for which the developer may receive COBBI credits for. They were minor language amendments, and city staff and the applicant are in agreement with those minor changes. Finally, regarding the 22.69 acres that the developer agreed to convey to the city, the developer is asking to move the conveyance date of that from April 2019 to May 1 of 2019. That conveyance date is still slated to occur. However, the grading of that property, the applicant is requesting to defer that to October 1, 2019, since there's a delay between the grading- to October 1st, 2019, since there's a delay between the grading and the conveyance date, they will be required to submit a security deposit if they don't grade at the time the property is conveyed. The Sterling Meadows project, the project map is up before you. Construction is going on. Currently, they are about halfway south of the project, south through the project. They're beginning phase two, phase one, which is the north half of the project. Does have quite a few complete homes with residents already moved in. This background on the project, the Sterling Meadows Original Development Agreement was approved in May 2008. In May 2018, the first amendment was approved to give a 90-day extension so staff can work with the applicant on more amendments that would be satisfactory to both the city and the developer. In August 2018, we did the second, more extensive development agreement. Those points included in that are on the screen before you. And regarding this third amendment, this was heard by the Planning Commission on February 7th. The Planning Commission recommended that the city council approve this third amendment before you tonight. Again, these are the points that the applicant is requesting to amend, extend the completion date of the first park, allow reimbursement for onsite park improvements consistent with the CFD agreement, and then modify the terms of conveyance of the 22.69 acres. That conveyance would still occur just at a later date, and grading would be pushed off due to weather and construction timing. This does not change the nature of the development, therefore, we've found that it does not require any further SEQA review. And we recommend tonight that the city council find that no further SEQA review is required, and that the city council approve the third amendment to the Sterling Meadows Development Agreement.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ablog? No? Okay, in that case, I will declare the public hearing open. I'll invite the applicant, Mr. Barry, up for opening remarks. You're welcome to wave them.
I am here to answer any questions. My name is Hayden Barry with the Trulac Company. I waive any comments. I'm available to answer any questions. I just really appreciate the work from staff on this ostensibly a cleanup item. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Barry?
Nope.
No? Okay. Then I will open the public comment opportunity. Kathy Ingle, you're up again. Following Kathy will be Amrit Sendhu.
I have a question about why were the Quimby credits from the park changed from 23.35 to 18.51? And what are Quimby credits?
Quimby credits are the amount of fees that a new home construction pays to build parks.
So they don't have to pay as much?
So the original DA, Quimby credits require land dedication of parks. The original DA had 18.15. When we went to go draft it, 23 got in there because there was an exclusion of 4.84 acres on the landscape strip that did not apply to Quimby, which was added by mistake. So we took-
So it's just a correction?
It's a correction, yes.
Oh, okay. And what are they again? Do you mind? What are Quimby credits?
Quimby is the calculation of acreage that's required to provide for parks based off of the number of units being built.
Oh, okay.
It's five acres per thousand.
Very comprehensive.
Five acres per thousand.
Where did the mayor go?
I don't know.
Oh.
He said he was taking a break and I'll run the meeting.
It's a state law, Kathy. It's a state law, Quimby.
Oh, it is?
You got the five acres per thousand.
You know, I like to look stuff up.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sendhu.
So I just want to comment to the fact that one of the reasons we moved to Elk Grove was because of all the parks, and it reminded me a lot of Davis. My husband grew up in Davis. I went to school in Davis, family from Davis, and unfortunately, after graduating from Davis, couldn't afford a house in Davis. And the most equitable place we could find was here in Elk Grove. And what brought us here was the parks. And so I really wanted to just appreciate and let you know that the fact that we build parks into our communities is extremely important. And I'm hoping that when you have a community being built and the parks are being built into that, and we're looking at lifestyle amenities, which is part of our strategic plan as a city, that we're looking for walking spaces. You can't walk in the city very much. We can, but that might be taken away soon. So I just wanted to let you guys know that, that I appreciate the building of parks. In Stone Lake alone, there's several parks. That's awesome. Even when I lived on the east side over by Calvine, I also lived across a preserve and a huge park, Jones Park, where my kids played at for a long time. So I just wanted to let you know that you guys have had a rough evening, and we've taken a lot of hits at you, but this is a good thing you guys are doing. So I just want to give you the props that building parks into our city is good, and these are the kinds of things as residents we're looking for. We want to live here. We really do. I don't want to move. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was the last member of the public for public comments. So I'll declare the public comment opportunity closed. Invite Mr. Barry to either refute himself for the fact that he's doing a good thing by building parks. He doesn't appear to want to, so I'll declare the public hearing closed and go to counsel deliberation and direction. Entertained a motion?
Motion to introduce and waive the four reading by substitution of title only, an ordinance approving the third amendment to Sterling Meadows Development Agreement, PLNG 19-003, no further SEQA review required.
Counselmember Soon, will your motion include the changes on the supplemental green sheet of this evening?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you.
All right, we have a second. A motion, amended the second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item. Where are we at? Nine-three. Next item.
That'll take us to item nine-point-three, which is the public hearings for the general plan update.
Pvd Mayor, Counsel Christopher Jordan here with the general plan update for your consideration this evening. I'll go through the presentation and answer any questions that you have. Our agenda this evening, we're going to recap where we are with this project, the various elements that are before you this evening for consideration. We'll talk about the revisions that have been made through the review process over the last six months. We'll talk about the environmental review process and the recommendations before you from your staff and from the planning commission. Just want to get in a little bit first into sort of the, setting the stage on this. There's a number of local issues which we've been talking about over the last several years and working on the general plan update, dealing with what the city looks like from a build-out perspective, our jobs housing ratio. Apologize, you can't see this one. It says transit planning, infill opportunities, economic development is a key area, amenities and services, and talent and innovation, and how we really start addressing all those things and how they feed into our city vision. And the general plan provides a process to ultimately address those and look at those from a broad-picture perspective. So what exactly is the general plan? It is the city's overarching policy document. It's the document which sets the tone for where we see ourselves going. It establishes a vision for the community, what we see ourselves going to in the future, and establishes goals and policies and standards for the implementation of that vision. It gets implemented through both private development applications, which the city considers and potentially approves, as well as a variety of public projects, including roadway improvements, drainage improvements, civic amenities like the Civic Center complex, our involvement at public library facilities, and the list goes on. It is ultimately a living document. You've seen a number of amendments over the years. There are obviously to get considered. And this is a state-mandated document, so there's a lot of regulatory direction and guidance we receive from the state on how the general plan should function and what ought to be included or what needs to be included. The city's first general plan was adopted in November of 2003, following incorporation. And as I mentioned, there have been a number of amendments over that time period. Starts with Laguna Ridge in 2004. We've done a number of safety element updates in 2005 and 2013. There was the Laguna West Annexation in 2005, a series of housing element updates over time, which we're getting ready to start another one here in the next few months, which is required by state law, the schedule for that. Then, of course, the southeast policy area adoption in 2014, to name a few. In terms of state law changes, lots happened. We're highlighting just a couple here on the screen. I believe in about 2007, there was the Complete Streets Act, which required the city to look at the variety of mobility pieces that occur along streets, not just automobile, but also pedestrian and bicyclist and other modes. There's been a number of legislative pieces regarding the 200-year floodplain, which the city's adopted and some cleanup to, and then the number of regulatory pieces relative to climate change. Four key documents make up the general plan update. There is another component which we'll talk about in a little bit. First and foremost is the general plan itself as the policy document. The potential environmental impacts of that are analyzed in the Environmental Impact Report, which is required by state law. Accompanying the project is the Climate Action Plan Update, as well as the Transportation Analysis Guidelines, which then implement some of the general plan policies. From a schedule standpoint, we started this project just about four years ago in 2015. There were some initial staff investigations and looking at, okay, what would this sort of start to take the shape of and look like, and how would we approach it? We talked about it in the council retreat in 2015, and ultimately led into a planning commission, city council joint study session in June, and then moving into the public engagement that fall. I won't go through all the details here, but essentially you get down to this last summer in 2018, where we released the draft documents for public review, and then went through the planning commission for their review and public consideration and public comment on the document and out here before you this evening. And through the process, we've had a number of public engagement opportunities, including city council, planning commission, joint study sessions. The last six months are shown here on the screen. With the review process, we released everything for public review on July 27th. We've had five planning commission workshops, as well as a public hearing to consider the materials and give you a recommendation. Embedded within this or overlaid within this has been the environmental review process. That document was released in July as well, and had a 60-day public review period consistent with the requirements of state law. And the comments to those, as well as comments that we've received throughout the process are included in your packet this evening. Some of the additional materials that are there, there is a comments matrix, which you have as attachment three in your packet this evening, which documents all the comments we've received on the policy pieces, all the staff responses to those comments. There's the errata, which tracks the revisions to the general plan itself. That's attachment, in attachment two is exhibit B. You have the updated draft climate action plan and the updated draft transportation analysis guidelines, which incorporate the revisions. And then there's the parks design principles, which we'll talk about later, but are the last piece of the general plan update. So start in on the general plan itself. The general plan is organized into a series of broad topic areas. These are framed as chapters. The table of contents we provided both lists the chapters themselves, and then also in subsequent pages list out the policies and the goals that occur and where you can see those. We list them both alphabetically and chronologically through the document. Let's focus and refer to them. As I mentioned, the general plan is mandated by state law. There's a number of required components or elements, the law refers to them as, that we have to include. Those you see at the top of this particular graphic, the mandated elements. The city's given process and the ability to organize those elements in a way that we see fit. Way we've done that is through the dark green boxes that are here in the middle about how these chapters lay out. So for instance, our land use and housing components or elements that are required by state law are covered through chapter four. Similarly, circulation is in chapter six, which we call mobility, and so on through this. There are some base pieces that occur and inform those chapters that we provided at a higher level. For instance, the planning framework in chapter three sets the land use designations, and the land use map talks about the circulation plan and the open space plan for the city. So I'm not going to go into detail on how all the individual policy pieces that are in the general plan. The planning commission's reviewed those, and they're giving a series of recommended revisions to the document, which I will highlight briefly. These are in your staff report in a little more detail if you'd like to look at them. But some of the key pieces to highlight, some of the supporting principles in chapter two have been updated based on the commission's review and some public comment. The land use map includes a number of specific revisions to individual policies that were identified through the review process, both there and through the corresponding zoning code update, which you'll be receiving on the 13th. There's some language regarding the study areas, which are essentially potential annexation pieces. South of the city, there are these four study areas the plan lays out. There's some organizing discussion, organizing principles we lay out in the introduction to that section based upon public comment and some subsequent review. We're recommending some revisions to how that's structured. Makes it easier to understand what the objectives are. There's a couple of policy revisions in the mobility chapter based on some public comment we've received. A lot of these deal with transit service and transit opportunities. In the clustering policy, we have an existing policy in the general plan which talks about the ability to cluster land uses, essentially taking up less acreage area for them, but having the same gross density occurring within the project. Through the process of developing the general plan, there was some discussion about potentially the rural area could take advantage of it after some subsequent review and discussion and some framework of how that could potentially happen. Through the public review process, we received some concerns and additional feedback on it. The planning commission's recommending removing the rural area from the clustering policy. So essentially leaves it as in the existing general plan. On tree protection policies, we've added some additional language there, talking about canopy expansion, and we've also made some revisions in the fire services section based upon comments from the Community Services District. Couple other revisions to highlight. On January 23rd, you gave staff direction on the revisions to the triangle area special planning area. Based upon that direction, we were able to incorporate the key revisions relative to land use in the general plan update. There's essentially a two-stage piece to this with the SPA. The general plan deals with more of the land use side, the broad piece of it, and then the individual regulations that get down to the level of allowed uses, setback standards, height limitations, street sections, those sorts of things are in the SPA itself, and those will come back to you at a subsequent meeting. Staff's working on those revisions. But just broadly, the direction that you provided us on January 23rd, you said the area north of Elk Grove Boulevard is to remain as a minimum one-acre lot size. South of Elk Grove Boulevard, the first 450 feet would be a quarter-acre lot size, and then beyond that, one-fifth of an acre, that there'd be a berm along Elk Grove Boulevard and along Grant Line to the north of Elk Grove Boulevard, and then walls would occur along Grant Line, south of Elk Grove Boulevard, and then along Bradshaw, and that development is limited to single-story in height. So the revisions that are in the general plan deal specifically with the land use side of it. You can see the map here, which then illustrates those revisions. We're also continuing to show the commercial overlay that is in the existing SPA, and there's been no change to that that's been directed. Again, the balance of the regulations are going to come through with the special planning area document, and staff is working on those revisions now. We don't have a hearing date for the planning commission or city council when you'd be considering those, but expect in the next couple of months. Here is the updated draft land use map that's in your packet. I won't go into specific sites in too much detail, but we have had a number of public comment pieces that have occurred. You can see those itemized out in the errata that's in the packet. If there's specific questions about any sites, we can certainly address those. Couple other pieces on the north study area. We had received direction from you back in August when we first rolled out the draft general plan for this area, which is up at Calvine and Grant Line on the east side of Grant Line Road. This is a potential annexation area in the future. The direction we received from you in August was to modify the language to allow for 50 acres of public, quasi-public use in here. It doesn't require it. It's simply an opportunity that could be looked at as a future development for being considered. So staff had included that in the errata. We presented to planning commission in January. Some concerns were expressed by the public and the commission, and the commission directed staff to remove it. I believe this is revision number 41 that's in the packet, so you see an empty line item for that. Certainly, council can add it back in this evening. We have draft language available. We can read into the record if you'd like. Two additional revisions that are highlighted in your staff reports. First is the discussion on the floor area ratio in chapter three. There's a little bit of additional language we feel is appropriate to add to give some clarity to how we do that calculation. There's some subsequent additional language we'll present to you with some additional detail, some greater depth to the language on what's included in the calculation. That'll be coming back to you at your next meeting with the zoning pieces. And then also the definition of compatibility. There's a revision in that that we're proposing. This occurs in the glossary in chapter 11. Two other pieces, we've been going through the revisions and the final production for the documents in advance of your potential action this evening. There were two things we noted over the weekend and are working to clarify. First, on the 200-year floodplain map, there was a projection issue with the GIS data. Essentially, the data was there. It wasn't coded properly, and we've had to get it recentered essentially where it needs to be. So this is the corrected graphic, the corrected layer. What we're showing here is figure eight dash two, but figures three-two and three-eight would also need to be modified. So with your indulgence, we'd like to get that incorporated this evening as well. This is based upon engineering analysis that's occurred through a separate process the city's engaged with a consultant on. And the 200-year data is based upon not just flow information along things such as the Consumis River and Laguna Creek, but it's also based upon state guidance for potential theoretical levee failures along critical corridors like the Sacramento River. One additional revision is in the east study area. This is another one of those potential annexation pieces. This is also along Grant Line Road. The figure that you have in the packet this evening identifies three activity district nodes. Essentially, think of these as neighborhoods serving retail opportunities at retail centers. There was one here at essentially Bradshaw, one at basically Elk Grove Boulevard, and then there was another one further up here, and obviously- there was another one further up here, and obviously that one doesn't make sense. So we'd like to get that clarified as well and just focus on these two that are more approximate into the core area of the city. So this would then affect figure four-six and three-two. So now I'll jump over to the climate action plan. The climate action plan, this is actually an update to a document we first adopted in 2013. The climate action plan identifies how the city will achieve and implement guidance from the state in reducing greenhouse gas emissions based upon targets that the state has identified. From a process standpoint, having a climate action plan provides an opportunity for streamlining of the environment review process, for subsequent development applications, both private and public. Projects that are compliant with the cap and show that they're able to meet the reduction obligations that are called out for are able to tier off of that document or leverage that document and the programs that are in there in order to go forward. If projects don't take advantage of the climate action plan or we don't have a climate action plan, each individual project has to do its own greenhouse gas emissions analysis and potentially mitigate individually for that. So it allows us to look at it on a more programmatic basis, citywide. Some of the legislative context to highlight here, some folks have heard about AB 32 and SB 32. These are emissions or greenhouse gas reduction targets established in state law. The most recent is Senate Bill 32 from 2016, which set a target for the state of 40% below 1990 levels by 2030. This essentially equates to six metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent on a per capita basis statewide. There are some long-term statewide reduction goals, which are actually set out in executive orders from the governor, both from Governor Schwarzenegger and Governor Brown, which identify an 80% reduction below 1990 levels by the year 2050. These have not been codified in legislative actions though yet. They're simply in executive orders from the governor. So CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, provides guidance on the implementation of this and how we use this from a tiering perspective. The emissions must be analyzed on an individual project basis in CEQA documents, but having a cap or some sort of other greenhouse gas emissions reduction plan provides a streamlining benefit if the criteria that are laid out in the cap are met and followed. So the climate action plan before you this evening has these five components to it. First, we have a baseline emissions inventory and then a future forecast for greenhouse gas emissions. We call this the business-as-usual forecast. We then take the targets and the goals for reducing greenhouse gas emissions to lay out where we ought to be, and then develop measures and implementation actions that then are shown to reduce those impacts. There's then a monitoring and verification procedure set out in the document for how we use the document going forward. So the approach that staff's taken with the update, identifying the state and federal mandates that support greenhouse gas reductions, there's a lot the state is doing in the state building code, other energy production pieces, fuel efficiency standards for vehicles and so on, that we can leverage and take advantage of. We refer to these as legislative actions or legislative regulations. We can continue to take advantage of existing city policies and programs where it makes sense and where we can show that those produce reductions in greenhouse gas emissions. And then we're also looking at the increasing population of the city. So as the city continues to grow, what does that look like in terms of how we address that? What's the correct way to do that? So we start with the baseline inventory. Here you can just see in a simple pie chart where existing emissions from 2013, which is the latest data upon which data was available when we started this process. As you can see, those numbers here, essentially on-road vehicles are the greatest source of greenhouse gas emissions, followed by residential energy and commercial and industrial Within due, the forecast for 2020, 2030, and 2050, which you can see here in 2013 being the baseline. The BAU is, so the left-hand column in this bar chart is the business-as-usual analysis. So basically, if we didn't have any sort of regulatory procedures or requirements in place, what would emissions look like as we continue to grow over time? And then the right-hand side, the BAULR, business-as-usual with legislative pieces that we are, reductions then happen as a result of the state's actions. So we account for those and look at what those emissions reductions start to become. These are the reductions from the legislative perspective we've incorporated. Won't go into them in any detail, but they're certainly here for reference. They are pretty extensive in terms of what the state's been working on. The guidance for how to prepare the analysis and prepare the plan comes from the California Air Resources Board or CARB. Their 2017 scoping plan gives us some information about how to set the targets, particularly in terms of per capita analysis. As I mentioned, the statewide per capita target for 2030 is six metric tons. This is based on all the emissions statewide and includes state forecasted growth. Based on the guidance from CARB, we actually need to be looking at revisions or modifications to this number. We wouldn't just use the six because there are certain economic sectors that don't exist in Elk Grove that may exist as a statewide average. These may be very heavy industrial users that we wouldn't have here, very intensive ag operations in the existing city. So we need to be modifying our calculations to reflect those. So they're based upon evidence and local emission sectors, the local population projections, and then we use the state framework to set those targets and look at the trajectory. So what would those then be for Elk Grove? So again, the baseline where we are today is 5.6 metric tons per capita. From a 2020 target, the state number looks at 10.6. Elk Grove's number would be 7.6 based on the calculations and using the state guidance. For 2030, there's that statewide number of six, but Elk Grove's number would actually be 4.1, once you discount for those components. So we can chart out what those numbers start to look like as the population increases over time. So on this chart, the blue area is the population. These are population projections we've put into the model. For 2020, you can see here the target number is the 7.6. With the business-as-usual, we're at 6.6. With the legislative reductions, we're at 5.3, but we think with all the cap measures, we're at 5.5. For 2030, you can see the business-as-usual emissions climb up to seven. We do see reductions, and we're actually able to be below, with all the measures that we're proposing, the state number, our equivalent of the state number at 3.5. When you get to 2050, though, which is obviously a very long time out, we're talking 30 years in the future, we don't know what those legislative pieces are going to be by then. We don't know what technologies are going to be in place. So while we have identified measures in the near term, which can help towards achieving those reductions, it would be speculative to say all the things that would exist by 2050. And the cap sort of recognizes this by saying that there's regular updates we need to be doing in order to keep the document fresh. Essentially, it's on every five-year period, we'd be looking at coming back and doing updates. The ability to roll in other legislative pieces that come in, or either measures that we could incorporate that make sense for Elk Grove. So the environmental document, as we'll talk about later, does analyze the potential impacts from 2050, acknowledges those, and acknowledges that those are significant and avoidable. But 2030 is the one, the standard that's actually set in the legislative principles, legislative elements. So the strategies that are laid out in the climate action plan, there are three: innovative and efficient built environments, essentially construction of buildings, resource conservation, and transportation alternatives, and congestion management. And you can see in the pie chart where we're able to, where those measures end up meeting towards the reduction. The majority of those are on the built environments, the balance of the non-transportation and the resource conservation. Some of the highlights of revisions that have occurred over the last couple of months, we've made revisions to participation rates for the voluntary measures. We want to remain conservative, avoid overestimation, make sure the plan's based on some solid assumptions. We've also made updates to the building energy efficiency standards. These are the state building requirements for energy efficiency. When we drafted the cap initially and released it, it was based on a certain draft of the 2020 building code. Since then, there's been updates to that draft, and now the state's adopted the final version. So we've updated the modeling to incorporate that information. And then promoting incentives in new construction and remodels, we've added some additional language regarding that. Additionally, increasing waste diversion beyond the state's 2020 standards, working with the integrated waste folks, we've been able to identify some target numbers for the city. These are our own target numbers out into future years for 2030 and 2050. Looking at opportunities to reduce organic waste have been incorporated. There's some components that are drafted, and I'll talk about in a minute, relative to electric vehicle charging or capable parking. Essentially, the planning commission's recommendation is for conduit installation in single-family homes. There's some other options we'll talk about shortly. And then there is an expanded discussion on available funding sources for implementation of the measures. So some alternatives for your consideration that are in the staff report, there are three. Staff highlighted these for the planning commission at their workshop in December. So walking through these on electric vehicle charging for single and two-family dwellings, townhomes. Planning commission's recommendation is just for the installation of conduit only. Staff's recommendation is consider the installation of the actual wiring and a dedicated branch circuit for the future installation of that charging equipment, what we refer to as electric vehicle supply equipment or EVSE. In multifamily and non-residential, planning commission did not recommend any changes, that there would not be a requirement for any sort of EV charging. Staff's recommendation is consider establishing standards. What we're proposing as potential standards are here in this table. So for multifamily residential, no matter what size project it is, that a minimum of 2.5% of the total spaces provided in the project would be outfitted at opening day with electric vehicle charging equipment, so the ability to actually plug in your vehicle to the system. An additional 2.5% of the stalls would be conduited and ready to go for the installation of that equipment at a later date as demand increases. That same concept would apply in retail, office, and industrial on minimum project sizes of 10,000 square feet. We've modified the percent numbers in these cases. For retail and industrial, it's 3% and 3%, and then for office, 5%. Sort of envision here of why there's a little bit of a difference is on the office side, you'd have folks that are there longer because they're employed, whereas with retail, you do have a changeover in that condition. And then on the industrial side, the parking requirement's just less because you have less intensity to those sorts of projects. The second piece for consideration is on photovoltaic. The 2020 building code is going to require single-family and low-rise multifamily development to have photovoltaic systems installed when those units get constructed. There's no requirement yet from the state for commercial, retail, office, or industrial to have that. We're expecting the state to impose that requirement before 2030, though. So we could look here at requiring a couple of things. One will be all the way to photovoltaic, but staff's recommendation actually is to look at requiring for non-residential, for commercial projects, that the roof structure for those projects, for those buildings, be designed to be able to accommodate photovoltaic or PV at a later point in time. What we've seen with some types of projects is they just build a basic roof system that's able to handle the load for that particular building and really nothing else. You don't have the ability to retrofit the building and add photovoltaic later. By requiring a more intensive roof structure, you could add in the PV system later. We're recommending a minimum size of 10,000 square feet for those sorts of projects. We've seen many of the majors, like a Walmart or a Costco in town that have come back later and retro, added PV to the building later through some sort of power purchase agreement. We're doing this sort of thing with our facility at the, at the community center building at the Civic Center site, but we don't have anything that really looks at it in terms of other types of buildings. So what we're seeing is let's look at this and at least have the roof structure in place to handle that. Planning commission considered it and is not recommending including it. And finally, electrification in new and existing development. There's a number of SMUD programs and incentives, and I believe staff from SMUD is here tonight and can speak to these if you'd like. Essentially encouraging folks to convert over from gas-powered equipment in their homes to all-electric, maybe an induction cooking system or some sort of heat pump system for heating the home. The idea being that assuming that electricity is produced more cleanly, you're able to reduce greenhouse gas emissions as a result of it. So we recommended to the planning commission that there be a study commenced to look at the feasibility of phasing in these sorts of requirements, that new development essentially be required to be all-electric and that that phase-in would potentially occur by 2030. Planning commission considered and did not provide a recommendation not to incorporate it. We don't know exactly when we would phase this in. We need to look at it in more detail. There's a lot of procedural things to look at. We need to make sure, obviously, SMUD's on board and how they would design the system. And then obviously, there's engagement with the development community because this impacts what projects or how the projects are designed and constructed. Moving then to the transportation analysis guidelines. This document implements the general plan policies relative to how we evaluate roadway system performance and looking at the potential impacts of projects relative to vehicle miles traveled. As we've talked about throughout the general plan update, the state's imposed or made revisions to the California Environmental Quality Act of how you look at traffic impacts in a CEQA document. Essentially, we're no longer allowed to look at it from a level of service perspective. We're required to look at it from a vehicle miles traveled perspective. So the general plan incorporates necessary policies to implement that, and the transportation analysis guidelines provide the guidance on implementing those policies and how the methodology occurs. The document also looks at the operations of pedestrians and bicyclists and what sort of improvements and impacts occur with those facilities as well. Some of the revisions to highlight here, we've made some clarification on roles and references to the public works director, clarifying triggers when the transportation analysis is required, and also clarification on the requirements, the analysis in the study areas. I do want to note, Lynn Wheat did email me earlier this week with a couple of typos she identified. These are on pages three, four, and five. They're really just page numbering references. So with your indulgence, we'll make those final revisions if you approve the document tonight. Lastly, the park design principles. This document establishes the programming, planning, and design for future park facilities. As the council's aware, based on our previous memorandum of understanding with the community services district, we've previously jointly adopted their Parks Master Plan, which includes these park design principles. The thinking going forward, based on their recent update to the Parks Master Plan, is that we would just co-adopt the park design principles because that's really the connection with us as a land use agency. The balance of their document deals with how they program and operate the recreation side of these facilities. So given that, this would just be the park design principles themselves. The CSD's already adopted it as part of their master plan earlier in 2018. So just sort of to highlight what's incorporated here, we commented earlier tonight, another item about Quimby requirements. So here you can see the five acres per thousand requirement and how that breaks out between park-type facilities. The Quimby law refers to neighborhood and community parks. We implement that with the CSD facilities. Local and neighborhood are those neighborhood facilities, and community specially used and sports parks are community facilities, and they all add up to the five per thousand. There's then guidance in the document about how we cite those, spacing conditions, as well as what the characteristics of each of those facilities are and types of components that be included in them. On the environmental review document, state law does require that we prepare an environmental analysis, the potential impacts of the general plan, and all these other pieces. This is an objective and informational document disclosing these environmental effects, identifies potentially significant direct, indirect, or cumulative impacts, and identifies feasible mitigation measures to mitigate significant effects where we can. The process to date, we released a notice of preparation to the public and various agencies back in June of 2017. Received comment on that. On July 27th of 2018, we released the draft environmental impact report. And again, it had a 60-day public review to it, which ended in September. All the comments we've received are documented in the final EIR, and we've responded to those comments, and those comment responses were circulated in January. Little bit about the EIR itself. It is what we refer to as a programmatic EIR, based on the guidance from the state for environmental impact reports. It examines the impacts of the overall area that may contain a series of subsequent projects. So essentially, there are projects that will occur supplement to, subsequent to the general plan, and you can rely upon the general plan EIR as the CEQA coverage for them. The analysis focuses on the changes in the environment that result from implementation of the project. So we don't take it all the way back to the beginning of time. We just look in comparison, in a lot of cases, to the existing general plan. Some of the impacts are, as I mentioned, analyzed, compared to the existing general plan. And the conclusions, the potential impacts are classified in one of three ways: less than significant, less than significant after incorporation of mitigation measures, or significant and unavoidable impacts. For significant unavoidable impacts, these don't limit the city's ability to approve the project, to approve the general plan. The city may continue to move forward with a project when it has significant and unavoidable impacts. CEQA just requires us to balance the potential economic, legal, social, technological, or other benefits, including region-wide or statewide benefits of the project, against those unavoidable environmental impacts. And we just have to document that in the findings of fact, and those are included in your packet this evening. So with that, staff and planning commission recommendation is to certify the EIR and adopt the statement of overriding considerations and the mitigating, monitoring, and reporting program, and adopt the general plan with the errata that is in your packet, as well as the revisions I've identified this evening, adopt the climate action plan, the transportation analysis guidelines, and the park design principles. concludes my presentation. Happy to answer questions. Any questions? Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Christopher, I actually, I just want to thank you and the staff and commend you all for all the effort you put in over the last four years, all the outreach you guys did asking questions, folks, all the joint sessions we had with council and planning commission, the workshops that we all had, the outreach to the, to the neighbors, I mean, to the residents about, you know, just teaching them about planning principles and such. So anyway, it was a lot of work, you know, consolidated into this, you know, relatively brief presentation. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? No? No questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I declare the public hearing open, I want to poll the council members. We have about 21 speakers at three minutes. That's going to be over an hour. Would there be an interest in limiting that to two minutes? Actually, 22 speakers now.
I would be willing to do that, but I would also, if we don't do that, just the speakers be mindful that when the time's up, the time's up, and I would ask the mayor to enforce that and not allow people to go on for a minute, minute and a half out for the time.
Okay.
So I'm...
It's an hour from now. It's 10 o'clock. You gotta go home and have milk and cookies or something?
Yeah.
Michael, show some respect.
I am.
Sir, please.
I'm hopeful that if you do these...
Excuse me, sir. Sir, thank you. So there's an interest here to maintain the three minutes, but let's cut it off at three minutes. And the timekeeper, if you can monitor that as well, at three minutes, go ahead and shut off the microphone so that we can, you know, move along. Look, the interest here is to have everybody to hear from everyone, and so if you have an interest in speaking, please sign up. But, you know, at the same time, we want to be mindful of everyone who's lined up. Okay? If you have a question, you have a comment, go ahead and sign up, please. So at this point, I want to open for, I want to declare the public hearing open for items 9.3, A through D. Want to open public comment, and our first speaker lined up is Ryan Hooper. And finally, Ryan, is Lynn Wheat.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, and members of the City Council. Ryan Hooper with the Law Offices of Gregory Thatch here this evening, here to talk about a small commercial piece that our client owns over at Laguna in Bruceville, located just between, a vacant piece just between the Quik Quack and the Safe Credit Union. We, our client is supportive of the general plan update. The one issue that we've had, that we've had an opportunity to mention to some of you is concerns relative to what the change from the Laguna Creek Shopping Center from commercial to residential, what kind of development burdens that that actually places on our existing commercial site relative to the masonry wall requirement, reduced setbacks, et cetera. We've worked with staff and had some positive conversations over the last week. As you know, there's also an issue with respect to kind of a spite strip that exists between our property and the adjacent property, and we'd like to see that resolved as part of the adjacent developers' application. But what we're really asking for tonight is something more concrete, something to insert into the general plan update or the subsequent zoning consistency update that would, that would address the wall, would address the setbacks, and provide our clients, who have made a long-term investment in the city at this site, give them the certainty that they, that they would appreciate having as they move forward with their marketing of the site to various project developers. So that would be our request tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Daisy Hugh. Following Daisy is Melinda Robinson. Oh, did I, did I skip Lynn? Oh, I'm sorry. Lynn Wheat, come on down, please. Lynn Wheat. And then following Lynn is Daisy Hugh. Nope, Jan Smutney Jones. Then Daisy. Thank you, Lynn.
Good evening. First, I'm willing to say I probably worked harder on this than any of you. I submitted 218 comments on our general plan update. So I'm going to start off by saying I think that this is such an important decision that all of our council members, who represent all of us, should be present, and it shouldn't be three council members and one mayor voting on this tonight. The other thing I'm going to say is I think that the EIR should be recirculated based on changes on the general plan that occurred after circulation of the DEIR, and I'm referencing the RATA here and the number of changes that have been made to that. I have not had a chance to even go through all of them, but I did pull, I did pull a map up, and the map 1-2 shows two of the SOI applications, but admits the third one, which is our city application for the multi-sports complex. I believe that ought to be on that map. Treatment of the casino. Shown in gray on the preferred land use map is tribal trust lands. The general plan states that tribal trust lands are exempt from local jurisdiction. Even if the city cannot make the tribe do something, such as mitigation, this does not mean that it should be, it should not be included in the environmental analysis, especially under a cumulative scenario. Okay, I'm running out of time. I had a couple of slides I want to show you because I think it's really important that Okay, this, this right here is a 2004 map of our multi-sports complex area and surrounding areas, and this was drawn in 2004.
Okay.
I want you to take a peek at this. Things have been on, in the books and been worked on for a long time. I put in a request, public records request for the industry, or, yeah, Industry Working Group, and I didn't get everything I wanted because it was considered attorney-client privilege. So this is the map, and I heard one of our council members say one time at a meeting, water's the next gold, and we're just going to be more rooftops in retail. This is what we're going to be. And how do I know? Because it's in our general plan update. You already have it all sketched out. So this is not a fair process. It hasn't been open to the public. I've asked a number of times if I could be on the Industry Working Group and put in my comments as a resident, because I invested in our community, and many times, it's not fair for us residents, and it's equally not fair for the development community. I'm going to keep reading. Although the air quality emissions modeled listed 38 acres of tribal trust lands as an existing and proposed land use, it attributed zero net admissions to it. This is impossible. This is an indication that they're not being included in the analysis. There is no indication that the tribal trust lands were included in the projected vehicle miles traveled calculations. Table 6-1 shows land uses with VMT, such as regional, commercial, but there is no line item for tribal trust lands and their VMT. Other impacts were determined comparing baseline conditions to project build-out of the preferred land use map, which shows tribal trust lands in gray. Did the city exclude this area from the analysis? And I believe I deserve one more minute to finish my comments as hard as I've worked on this. INF 2-1, revised policy regarding sewer capacity and infrastructure requirements. Why did they take out the requirements, the capacity and lines shall be in place at the time of project approval, now says, "In time to meet the demand created by the new development or assured through bonds or other certainties to the satisfaction of the city." N R 3-4, revised policy regarding water supply infrastructure requirements. Why did they take out the requirement, the capacity and lines shall be in place at the time of the project approval or insured through bonds or other sureties? Now says, "Ensure adequate water supplies available to the community by working with water providers or facilities, infrastructure, and appropriate allocation." Again, this DE, this EIR needs to be recirculated, and we need not to be voting on this tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Jan Smutney Jones. Following Jan is Daisy Hugh. Following Daisy is Melinda. Please be prepared to come on up, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am going to, first of all, read L U-2-4, require new infill development to be compatible with the character of the surrounding area and neighborhood. I am taking the destruction of the Stone Lake Landing, which currently has the businesses that we utilize as an infill project, and I am here to ask you not to change the zoning in that area because it would be incompatible with our neighborhood. Specifically, I am asking you to oppose any categorization of Stone Lake Landing or the adjacent data center or any other property bordering West Tarrin as an employment center. We don't really know what that means, but we do believe what it means is the designation of an employment center is masking the real purpose of letting the construction of a 255-foot trauma hospital, and by the way, I will repeat this, that's about 40 feet taller than the state Capitol in our residential neighborhood. With this goes added noise, traffic, the unfortunate need for an increased presence of law enforcement in our community, and that just kind of goes with what happens at a trauma center. This is incompatible with our neighborhood. A large reflective glass building, the size of the, that is, the size of the proposed hospital, complete with a helipad next to a wildlife preserve, is completely incompatible with its surroundings. And so that is just, I'm asking you today to either not rezone it or basically put a footnote in it that employment centers do not include a, specifically, do not include that trauma center. We're going to have a discussion about whether the trauma center belongs in our neighborhoods or not. Let's have a straight-up discussion about that and not squeeze it in under changes in some zoning laws. I want to read real quick from River West Investments. This is a document that we pulled off the internet that'll describe kind of where we live. Stone Lake is a master plan community where only 453 of the 850-acre project will be developed and a remainder permanent open space. Wetland Preserve, Stone Lake's regional refuge will surround the community. Completing the master, the master plan will be addition of an elementary school, which is a great school that my daughter went to, a 21-acre park that's now named after Supervisor Natoli, which we don't want turned into a campground, which will happen if this trauma center goes through, and additional mini-parks, shopping centers, which apparently are going to be destroyed. So we're basically asking you to, you know, the developers kept their promise, okay? It is a great community to live in. It's a very diverse community to live in. We're all very neighborly. The developers kept their promise in terms of attracting us to move to Elk Grove and live in those communities, and we're asking you not, not to basically destroy that, you know, keep your promise. Let's keep this a nice residential community adjacent to a wildlife preserve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Daisy Hugh. Following Daisy is Melinda Robinson.
Okay. I'm also here to talk about how the general plan affects the Stone Lake neighborhood and the proposed hospital. I oppose the general plan. It needs to be reevaluated, and, and then other elements need to be, be thought about after it's redone. For example, the, the non-binding part of the general plan, if so much work has been put into a general plan, why are we making it non-binding? Why are we allowing for so many amendments to continue? It's my understanding that there's been over 42 amendments to this general plan since 2003. So if we're really going to have a general plan that is going to be our vision and our blueprint, we need to make something that we can stand by and that won't continue to be amended. The other issue is traffic. The traffic analysis and what's been contemplated in this general plan is mostly envisioning that people are going to start using public transit. I can tell you that as a mother of two with a full-time job, as well as community events that I'm involved with, I will not be using public transportation, and I think I'm in the majority of people in Elk Grove. Our traffic is bad, and there's no real plans in this general plan to make it any worse. Apparently, it's as good as it's going to get right now, and that's unacceptable. And also regarding the general plan, it's very tied to zoning amendments that are happening, and I live in Stone Lake. It is in a 200-year flood plain. The proposed CNU hospital is supposedly going to be built in a flood plain, and there is changing, two changes proposed in the zoning code that state, that are going to delete certain provisions that make it prohibited from building a hospital in a flood plain, which seems to make good sense, you know? Don't build a hospital in a flood plain. The language that's being taken out of proposed zoning amendments that are done in, in conjunction with this general plan is where it states healthcare facilities and government facilities shall be prohibited from being built in the F district. The city council may approve exceptions to this if it determines that the operations of the proposed facility would be substantially compromised in an alternative location. This is being deleted under proposed amendments, and my, and allowing for even bigger loophole. So what I could envision happening from something like this is a referendum or an initiative being put on the next ballot, because can you imagine what the average voter's going to say when asked, "Do you think a hospital should be built in a flood plain?" And what if at that point, we don't give them any exceptions? No hospitals in flood plains, period? And we'll eliminate this exception that's already currently in the zoning code. So really, this general plan is just leading to a bunch of more problems, and underlying, underlying it is the existence of this CNU proposal, which is to build a hospital. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Melinda Robinson. Following Melinda is Amrit Sandhu.
I wanted to thank you for responding to Kathy during her address to the council, because we do need to hear from our leaders in order to be able to trust. And as great as all of this is, being able to address you and voice our concerns, it's such a vulnerable position to be in. We are at your mercy, and I wish we knew what you knew, and I wish we had the full story and the truth. With that said, you do have an obligation to the citizens, and we understand that there is a vision for the city, and what's been demonstrated thus far has been such an egregious lack of transparency. I know we keep using that word, but it explains things quite well, that it's causing serious concern, not only for what your vision is, but whose vision is it? Who benefits? And don't say the residents of West Elk Grove, as we've already argued that there are several available medical facilities to serve our community, including the Plant Dignity Medical Center on Elk Grove Boulevard between Costco and Falls Event Center. They too will have a helipad. Is CNU even needed? Can we please learn from our lessons when we think of the vision for our city? What message are you sending about the protection of your neighborhood and the dream of opening up your own business? At least to go small did not destroy current business, but if you cannot learn from the demise of that project, I don't have faith in your vision. I ask again, who benefits? We know CNU does, since our hospital's for profit. The feasibility of this hospital's success is a big concern. What proof have they provided that ensures they will not fail? This is a huge project and a huge gamble. Even if CNU was slated for another area, the concern for their success is grave. And I ask again, why the change in the zoning plan? All fingers are pointing to CNU, and I wish I was allowed to ask or could honestly get an answer as to when this amendment was actually proposed for the zoning change. Elk Grove's grown so much, it's exciting, but you have to make smart decisions about the growth opportunities and support what will thrive, endorse what will promote a solid community within, with businesses that are truly a benefit to us, and most of all, location, location, location. I realize you cannot control private land purchase, but you clearly have a say and influence over the appropriateness of the business, and if rezoning is required, you have a duty to make sure the location is right. I've been in Lakeside since 2005. There was not much there to serve our neighborhood, other than fast food and gas stations. We love our businesses in Stone Lake Landing. Dreaming Dog was packed on Saturday night. The current zoning plan for our community should stay as it is. It's working out well for our community, and we don't want it to be destroyed. And the only other questions I have, which I know you can't answer, are if two hospitals are going to be within five miles, being Dignity and CNU, how will that impact your climate action plan? How will that affect the goal of lowering greenhouse gas emissions? And the alleged 1,400 jobs, that's 1,400 people, whether here or commuting here, and that's a lot of traffic and a lot of congestion. And will these, will this facility make your goal of lowering greenhouse gas emissions and improving our climate action plan, will it make it better or make it worse? These are the visions that I think need to be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Amrit Sandhu. Following Amrit is Chris Ann Gillis.
I'm going to use her nine seconds left. It's Amrit Sandhu.
I'm sorry?
It's Amrit.
You have three minutes. Come on.
Yeah, please. I mean, it, you know, I mean, we, we're trying to move through everyone. You got to understand and respect that there are a number of other people that are signed up behind you to speak, so...
I was just telling you...
Three minutes, please summarize it and be very concise. Thank you.
I was just telling you how to say my name. That's all.
I'm sorry?
I was just correcting on how to pronounce my name.
Oh, oh, okay. I'm sorry.
That's all I said. I was going to use your nine seconds.
Thank you for correcting me.
My name is Amrit Sandhu.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Thank you.
Going back to the vision of Elk Grove, when I look at it, and I did, you know, Ochem was hard enough. I have a degree in genetics, a degree in psych, and a doctorate degree, and that general plan is not easy to read, okay? And it's coming from a very educated person. But going back and through it and looking at the vision, I do, I do want to bring up that in March of 2017, at the City Council Strategic Planning Meeting, that Priority One talks about target industries in the employment centers and bringing 10,000 jobs, and it does include medical offices, services, and devices, employment centers to focus on Laguna West commercial area, and Stone Lake is not that. Priority Two, lifestyle amenities. I already came up here and said how much I really enjoy the parks, and that's one of the reasons why I came here. One of the things that you guys wrote under lifestyle amenities is Laguna West area, particularly around CNSU, that was in March of 2017. The property was purchased in March of 2017, and the announcement was made in December of 2018. We have known for a long time, and sir, in that press release, you mentioned that you walked into a doctor's office a year and a half ago and were presented with this. So just want to bring that up, that this vision of CNSU has been on the books, on the books. You yourself said a year and a half ago, prior to March of 2018, your strategic planning in the lifestyle amenities talks about particularly around CNSU and existing underlying, underutilized shopping centers among other suitable areas. You have a shopping center in place. We're telling you as residents, we like walking. This is not a walking or pedestrian-friendly city. We live in an area we can walk to. As a vision, we really need to look at, how can we make it that people want to live and walk to businesses? Right now, based on the proposal, I'll be walking to a hospital. Sir, I spend 70 hours a week in a hospital. I don't want to live next to one. So I'm asking that this be looked at, reviewed, look at all the environmental impacts, issues, the traffic issues, the noise issues. I drove down Elk Grove Boulevard today. It took me 10 minutes to get from 99 just to Laguna Springs. It took me 10 minutes to get from 99 just to Laguna Springs. That's not very far. Now, we're talking about adding major businesses all along the Elk Grove Boulevard corridor, and there's nothing in here to mitigate, nothing in the plan to mitigate traffic on Elk Grove Boulevard and Laguna Boulevard. It's ridiculous how much time it can take just traveling down Bruceville to get to Target. I spend a lot of time there, too. Lately, my Target time's been here, trying to get you guys to listen to me. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am.
There's my nine seconds for my name.
Appreciate it. Next speaker is Chrissanne. And following Chrissanne is Caitlin Wright.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you, Mary Lee, and council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. My name's Chrissanne Giles. I'm the Director of Policy and Initiatives for the Home Builders Association. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the climate action plan. I want to thank staff for all of their coordination and support, especially CJ. He's been incredibly generous with his time in answering all of our questions. The home builders are still challenged to design all-electric homes. We're working with S-Mud and other utility providers on how to do this at a statewide level and on the local level. But these decisions need to be made at the very beginning of a project planning, to accommodate dry utility design, the upsizing of the panels in the vaults, and all the other items that go into serving a community that's all-electric. So we also, not to mention the buyer's preference for gas appliances, we're still trying to work that one out. So we just want you to be mindful when you're accommodating staff's recommendations, that you implement any changes with coordination with the building code updates. Those are the key components that the building community needs in order to find the technology, be able to utilize it, and be able to plan it accordingly. So just some thoughtful things we'd like you to consider in the implementation. Thank you so much.
And thank you for correcting my pronunciation. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Next speaker is Caitlin Wright. Following Caitlin is Orlando Fuentes.
Good evening, council. Caitlin Wright here, representing the 6,000 members of the Sacramento Association of Realtors. I'm here this evening testifying in support of the climate action plan. And just to let you know that the Sacramento Association of Realtors wants to do whatever we can to support the city as you move forward, working with S-Mud and PG&E to educate homeowners on the importance of doing energy-efficient upgrades that can electrify their home and save energy. We have access to home buyers and sellers throughout the Elk Grove region and access to realtors who are always looking for materials to give people. So anything that we can do as you develop these materials to help distribute them, please let me know. I also wanted to tell you that we have our home energy conservation program. We've upgraded nearly 800 homes throughout the Sacramento region at this point. This is providing tier-one weatherization upgrades to low-income owner-occupied homes, and they reduce one ton of greenhouse gas emissions per home per year, and they save the homeowner up to $300 per year on their energy utility bills. And so if that's something you're interested in pushing information out on, we can work with you on that as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Caitlin. Orlando Fuentes. Following Orlando is Lori Heller.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. Orlando Fuentes, community activist. Tonight, I am here to say I support the staff report submitted to you from Christopher Jordan, specifically in regards to the EV charging for one and two-family dwellings and for PB-ready buildings. One of the things that I've been observing and people have shared with me is that the climate action plan that came forth from the Planning Commission was somewhat weak, that we needed a climate action plan that was much stronger. And I urge the city council to move forward with a strong climate action plan that, and I'm not an expert in climate action planning, but I do want you to move forward, to move to the highest standards possible, not just for the citizens of Elk Grove, but for the people of the United States and truly the world. Climate change is an international problem, and we really are not focusing enough attention on it. It's almost as if first, you know, on the news, we're going to talk about climate action plan, now we're going to move to sports and weather. Climate action plan is the crisis of the day. So I encourage my community, the city of Elk Grove and this city council, to move forward with an aggressive and a high-standard climate action plan. I'm sure there are many people who are going to come behind me and speak more eloquently about what we need in that climate action plan, but I really urge you to make it the best possible. We are in California. We are in the shadow of the state capital, of the most, the fifth-largest economy in the world, and we need to set an example, not just for the state, but for the United States and the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lori Heller. Following Lori is Trina Lee.
Thank you, gentlemen, for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here on behalf of 350 Sacramento region, and I'm addressing the climate action plan. I'm going to begin by paraphrasing David Wallace Wells, who wrote "The Uninhabitable Earth: Life After Warming." Twenty-five years ago, we were in a relatively stable climate. Now we're on the brink of catastrophe. That's how much carbon we've put in the air in the last 25 years. The UN says if we don't change course on fossil fuels in less than three generations, we'll be at four degrees warming. That means total economic damages of $600 trillion, which is double all the money in the world today. For a long time, we believed that saving ourselves from devastating impacts would be expensive and that we'd have to give up economic growth. But the new economic research reverses that logic. Last year, a major study said that rapid decarbonization would add $26 trillion to the global economy by 2030. That's an incredibly fast payoff, in addition to avoiding the $600 trillion impacts. Reducing greenhouse gas makes economic sense. An aggressive and substantive climate action plan can position Elk Grove for the 21st-century economy, ready to take advantage of renewable energy technologies and businesses and the growth that's coming to the Central Valley as climate refugees from our coastal cities move inland. Nearby cities are getting ready. They're building walkable communities, mixed-use neighborhoods, multimodal transportation centers. I know these sound like buzzwords, but this is what young millennial families will want. They care about their carbon footprint. And being tech-savvy, they will expect their cities to be green and their homes to be carbon-zero. Will Elk Grove be competitive? Climate action plans are opportunities, and we ask you to be imaginative and courageous as you build a new future. The UN report says we're on track for a total loss of all ice sheets, a billion climate refugees, twice as much war, mosquito-borne epidemics, and 30% reduction in agricultural yields. Our generation is the last chance. And you raised your hand. You said, "I want to lead it." I'm suggesting it's easier than you think. You can leave a legacy of progress by just following the money. And I want to leave you with two things. This is a list of articles from Forbes magazine about the new technologies that are, and trends in renewable energy. And also, did you see the article in Your Own Elk Grove Citizen, where your citizens here are asking for sustainable communities? I'll leave these for you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Trina Lee is our next speaker. Following Trina Lee is Nancy Castanetti.
Hi there. I'm Trina Lee. I live in Elk Grove, and I teach at Elk Grove High School. I spoke here a year ago to encourage the city council to become a climate mayor-city, and I'm here today to urge you to strengthen the climate action plan that's before you tonight. As I was thinking back, oh, it was a year ago that we talked about being climate mayor-city, I sort of wondered, well, what has happened in the years since that? So what I learned was that 2018 was actually the world's fourth-hottest on record. And in the United States alone, we have suffered 14 separate weather-related catastrophes that cost a billion dollars or more each. In the past year and a half, we've seen five Category IV or V hurricanes make landfall either in the U.S. or in its territories. And of course, we all know that 2018 was the deadliest and most destructive year for California wildfires in our history. An entire California town was obliterated in an unprecedented firestorm, and 84 human lives were obliterated with it. This nightmare not only affected Elk Grove citizens, whose families and friends were in the fire's path, it also forced what I believe is still the city's largest employer, my employer, the Elk Grove Unified School District, to close because we could not breathe. Within the last few months, scientists have issued increasingly dire warnings of the need for immediate dramatic action. These include a report by 13 U.S. agencies that predicts devastating effects on our economy, our health, and our environment, and a UN report by 91 scientists in 40 countries who reviewed 6,000 studies and found that we only have a few years left to avoid the very worst effects of climate change by 2040, within most of our lifetimes. And finally, a poll last month found that 74% of Americans now say this is an important issue to them. In other words, in the last year, the evidence of the disastrous effects of climate change have become so overwhelming that doing nothing is actually the most extreme position that we can have. The only responsible behavior for ourselves, and most importantly, for our children, is to take serious action to mitigate carbon emissions today. I fear that the cap that has been presented to you tonight is not commensurate with the urgency of the situation before us. You have heard suggestions from people far more versed in this than I am on what can make it stronger and more effective. I'm just here to remind you that the danger of climate change is actually upon us. So please, let's do what we can to protect our children's future. Let's not wait and see what the next year is going to bring. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nancy Castanetti. Following Nancy is Donna Soplin.
Hi. I'm Nancy Castanetti. I'm a resident of Elk Grove and also a member of 350 Sacramento. I have met with some of you one-on-one to discuss centralized development here in Elk Grove, walkable communities, and expanding public transportation options here locally to improve our lifestyles and the sustainability and future of our city. I'm here today to talk similarly about an environmental issue as designated in the current cap, which I would like to see strengthened similarly to the previous few speakers. We care about the ethical implications of our failure to concretely invest in sustainable development, but we also have financial implications. The way that the cap is now is that it shifts the greenhouse gas mitigation costs from developers to the city of Elk Grove taxpayers. Normally, greenhouse gas mitigation is developed through project-specific CEQA review and then enforced through the city permit conditions and implemented as part of the project at the developer's expense. Elk Grove's cap, as it is, uses a different approach. It avoids requirements on the new development, except it's already required by the state, which is the minimal possible. Instead, it proposes over 100 new city staff activities, mostly to promote voluntary actions that Elk Grove residents could take. So the cap's project streamlining is not only procedural, it shifts mitigation costs from private to public sector, which is us. These new city tasks would take substantial new funding, and costs to accomplish them have not been determined, let alone budgeted. Without knowing costs, the city can't commit to implementing the cap and giving uncertainties of a future budget. Implementation might never happen, and we won't reach those goals for 2030, for 2050 that had been discussed. What I would like to see is that the developers who have a fleeting interest in our city are not favored to an extent where then the cost of this is put onto us, who have invested. Somebody's going to pay for the environmental impacts that we're experiencing. It's going to be a moderate amount now by the developers, or it's going to be an elevated and potentially astronomical cost later, retroactively by us. This is not the time to kick the can in regards to a strong and enforceable cap. I'm asking the city, based on prudent, long-term self-interest, to adopt a stronger and more equitable climate action plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Donna Soplin. Following Donna is Oscar Bellager.
Good evening. My name is Donna Soplin. I live at Heritage Lakeside, the 55-plus gated community near Stone Lake Landing. The vision statement of the general plan is based on input from August through December of 2015. Part of the statement states that the city considers the needs of future generations while protecting what is valued today. We in the surrounding communities, Stone Lake Lakeside and Heritage Lakeside, value the existing character of our neighborhoods, and California North State University will not enhance our quality of life. One of the supporting principles to the vision states that existing small businesses are protected, even as we invite new businesses. It also states that the new development plans are grounded by community needs and market demand, which are carried out efficiently and holistically. According to reports by other healthcare systems in the Sacramento area, their bed occupancy rates run at 60%. Do we really need a 250-bed hospital towering 13 stories high, two-five-story parking structures, and a five-story dormitory in a residential neighborhood infringing on our privacy rights? Many of us purchased our homes years ago, feeling confident and trusting we would always be able to enjoy our lake views and open spaces. For many of us, this will be our last home, where we intended to enjoy our last years, sitting out on our patios, enjoying the ducks, herons, zebras, and so many other birds that fly over and land in our lakes and on our docks. A policy also states that the creation of an employment center should serve the neighborhood by providing services desired by the district's population. We do not desire services which will destroy our existing small businesses and impact the quality of life. Additionally, Sutter, Mercy, and Kaiser Hospitals, excuse me, Dignity now, and Kaiser Hospitals are all not-for-profit hospitals, all donating millions of dollars annually to the communities they serve. All not-for-profit hospitals have to spend a portion of their revenue on community benefits to keep their exempt status. A for-profit hospital only has to answer to their shareholders and/or their investors. I do not believe this is the best place for a hospital in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Oscar Bellager. Following Oscar is Suzanne Petchy.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Oscar Bellager. I'm with 350. We're interested in climate change. Sometimes I wake up at night thinking, "The house is on fire. The basement's burning." I can smell the smoke. There's still time to get the kids out and save the structure, but I'm so busy. I've got other projects. Maybe someone else will call it in. Maybe it's not as bad as people say about the cap. It really doesn't work. First, that's the bad news. It's supposed to mitigate climate impacts from general plan build-out. Do it right, and you're rewarded with CEQA streamlining. But you can't have your cake and eat it too. There are three problems. First, it's unfair. Developers normally pay all mitigation costs. Now they do nothing beyond the minimum state requirements. Instead, the city has over 100 projects that they need to take on at taxpayer expense. So that's an equity issue. Second, implementation is not credible. Most measures are not detailed. There's no performance schedule, and they only encourage voluntary actions, which we have doubts about. Finally, there's no funding for these 100-plus city staff projects, and there are no costs for that work identified. All of the cap measures need to be implemented, and the cap says as much, because even if everything goes as planned, the city will barely make its 2030 targets. But the cap says that after adoption, staff will, quote, "prioritize implementation based on funding, feasibility, alignment with other city objectives." No public review. So all the measures are needed to meet the mandate, but staff will choose among them. They have to, because they're not funded. We don't even know what the measures would cost. How can you commit to unknown costs? And if you can't commit to them, what would be your, what's your intention in adopting the cap? Impacts from development are sure. The mitigation is not. You can't have your cake and eat it too. Now, the good news. You could have a great cap. You could be in the forefront. Just make it fair. Change- Just make it fair. Change all the mays to shals. Set an implementation schedule, identify costs, and commit to funding them. Then, we'd have a plan the city could be proud of.
Thank you, sir. Suzanne Pechi. Following Suzanne is Krista Demos.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Suzanne Pechi, and I oppose-
I'm sorry. I keep making that mistake. Thank you for correcting me.
Oh, Pechi. Don't take it off my time. I oppose adoption tonight without all of the council members present. Like Lynn said, she and I and a few others have spent so much time reading through all of these documents. I doubt any of you are familiar with as much as we are in trying to help put the voice of the people into the general plan. So, I would appreciate if all five of the council people were here. And I oppose the adoption tonight again, because I don't feel the water supply for the casino and urbanization for the eight thousand acres outside the city limits that the city envisions developing are sufficient. And this water supply, especially because the City of Elk Grove is moving into the arena of becoming a new special district, requires a new, separate element. Although I know Ada required, a ninth can be added to sufficiently cover the issue for everybody, for the citizens, and probably for the region. I want to go back through some of my concerns for anybody that wasn't here about my opinion that the City of Elk Grove and Elk Grove Water, behind closed doors, have entered into a contractual arrangement that include the formation of this special district. And this is a LAVCO process that requires significant public support and involvement, and none of that has been done. None of it has been done. All of it has been done without the public process. There have been no public hearings. There's been no possible... There's been no voting if it's required. There's been no protest hearings if they're allowed, and all of this will have to be done at some point in time. It's my opinion that after having attended the Elk Grove Water District meetings, that the expansion will be into Florin RCD Elk Grove Water District. None of those people that came to that rate study, that studied all those documents, know about this proposed expansion. None of the people that might be in this new proposed district know about this proposed expansion. There's been no feasibility study that is required, no financial analysis, not a map for the proposed boundaries for the special district, not a plan for the expanded water service into the new areas the city wants to develop. There haven't been timelines or reports that are required of LAVCO, who has jurisdiction over this project. And I really feel, as one that has really been significantly involved with Sigma for the last three years, reading documents, let me finish, and going to meetings, that this is going to become a problem. If, in fact, Elk Grove becomes a new special district and goes on to file to become a groundwater sustainable agent and wants to develop its separate groundwater sustainable plan, there will be problems in your stakeholder, required stakeholder outreach that are going to resurface because of your lack of forming a special district according to the law. So, again, I'm asking you to reconsider this adoption tonight. Give all of the issues that all of us that have looked at this, that have for months spent our time, and reconsider some of these issues-
So, that's four minutes, ma'am. Please back it up.
-reconnect with your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Krista Demos. Following Krista is Kathy Engel.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Krista Demos, and I wanted to speak on the issue of the North Study area, and I wanted to reiterate the landowner's commitment to contributing approximately fifty acres for a public or quasi-public use. I also wanted to thank Christopher Jordan and the entire planning team for all of their exceptional, exceptional hard work after so long, and a lot of the headaches and heartaches that they've undergone. Really, thank you, and to thank the council for all of your leadership. It is an honor to be a part of the Elk Grove community. We love it, and we are reiterating our commitment to the donation of fifty acres. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Kathy Engel. Following Kathy is Constance Conley.
Hi. Okay, I agree. It isn't long enough to talk about something that's six hundred pages. That's just ridiculous. I think that we should be able to comment on each element. But that being said, it is what it is. So, this is what I want to say. I talked to Daryl Doan today. I think that there's something wrong with this. It looks like this was backed into, specifically, the employment center. Daryl, you told me it was always supposed to be an employment center. We found out that was not right. It was never supposed to be a mixed use or anything like that, and AKT was on our board for a long time, and I'm sure that they would back that up. It was a master-planned community surrounded by wetlands, and we have all their literature that says that. So, their new people and their new developments probably aren't going to have a lot of faith in them. If other people get, you know, I wouldn't want to use a bad word, don't want to help, you know, don't get... They start just building hospitals and things that it was never intended to be. I asked Daryl point-blank, "Did the city know about it?" He said about CNU, he said "No." I asked him if he, just on his own, decided to change all of Laguna and make it a complete medical district all on his own, or if, more likely, CNU came to him, and they backed into this. And you did tell me, and I will quote it, "The city..." Because I put quotes around it when we were on the phone. "CNU came to me with their plan, and I developed it." So, this was not something that was a city plan, and then somebody came. This is something that is completely being changed for one big, giant company, and it's wrong. It's wrong to throw all those other people out. And he did say up here when he gave his... On January ninth, when he gave his presentation, he said he did not give Dreaming Dog any incentives, and there were many, many incentives given to them, and that's all in the documents. So, I don't know why we're pretending, and he knew at that time that they were not going to be there anymore, because the dates don't match up on this, guys. So, either you knew, but there's something wrong with this. And changing this zoning, changing to employment center, and then changing the RD and changing that, mixing it with another one, it is so obvious what was done there. This was backed into. And I would like to know, again, since I guess you guys can answer now, when did everybody know about this project? Are you ever going to tell us?
I heard about it last fall.
You heard about it last fall? So, like, in 2018, October, November?
Yeah.
Ish? Okay. Uh-huh. Uh-huh. That's not true, because you said in your thing, you said at the opening, you said, "I can't believe it was a year and a half ago that I..." You called me into your office. He called you in. And we said, "You told me your plan and your dream of your hospital." It's all on video at the big opening.
Okay. Thank you.
Pat, did Mr. Council-
It was the fall of last year.
Okay, so you guys all-
And I see that wasn't even specific to-
Sorry. It wasn't even specific to a particular project. It was having to do with, they were looking for some creative financing, and so that was-
Well, I would like to ask that at least you give this another look and think about all of the people and changing an entire area before you do this, because-
You know, I just want to say, for the record, there are two other properties that have been zoned for a hospital. Those kind of conversations were in the context of all of that. So, for you to make that statement, it's not completely accurate. And I'd say, look, there's the Dignity, there's that Sutter. That's the conversation we've been talking about. But, you know, I mean, we can sit here all night and have a conversation, but, you know, again, I have to be respectful for the number of other peoples that are signed up.
I don't even understand what you just said, but, okay. I do-
Okay. You know, I'd be happy to have a conversation with you. Call my office. Let's sit down, because, you know, it's going to be endless if we sit here and have this discussion. Okay?
Well, we just want the truth.
Yeah. No, I hear you. Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Our next speaker is Constance Conley.
Following Constance is Mackenzie Weezer.
Okay, I have several items to get to, because I have to do Lynn's overflow. But the first thing I want to talk about is I want anything that's in anything, that's in the general plan update, zoning code update, anything to do with CNU to be pulled. And I'll tell you why. And I have to bring my cheaters up, because it's so hard to see. See this little area right here? Right here? This happens to be CNU proposed property. Two planning commissioners are here tonight. They did not approve this change. How did it get in there? They didn't approve it. There needs to be some explaining, as Oprah would say. You guys got some explaining to do. So, with that, okay. All our developer friends didn't meet with any of us, didn't even care to meet with any of us. God, I miss Lux Taylor, because he would sit down with us, and we would hash it out, and we would always come to Clemson Census. And Pat, you were on the planning commission at the time, and we would come to council meetings and say... Lux would come up and do his proposal, and he would look at us, and we'd say, "We got nothing," because we're in total agreement with him. Isn't that the way to do a project? Hey, isn't that a way to do a project, gentlemen, ladies?
Yes.
So, anyway, and the other thing is, now I'm going to get to what Lynn had to do, because I have 1.39. Page 104, emergent response from six minutes to seven minutes. What does that say about our health and safety of the residents? Why aren't your developer friends being required to build more fire stations? And then, I'll take you to the lovely green area, right here, which is the rural area. It's even longer. Do you know the average age of people that live in the rural area? We're getting old, folks. We need response time to be quicker, not, you know, less. Okay, so now I'm going to read what Lynn wants me to read. Okay, the EIR didn't have a traffic study that included two to four p.m. in the analysis. However, the tab on page twelve says weekday afternoon peak, two to four may require analysis. How come this could not be done with the EIR analysis, especially when considering our poor air quality? Overriding considerations will allow continued poor air and increased traffic congestion. And all I have to say is thank God for Lynn Wheat. And again, anything to do with CNU property, including land that was... A zoning code that was not approved, needs to be tabled, and we need to have a serious discussion, because, as Jason said, our new model is transparency, 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 and we're not getting it, folks.
All right, Mackenzie Weezer. Following Mackenzie is Stacy Anderson.
I'm just going to place this here, because this is what landed on my porch this summer. I'm a little hot. Mr. Mayor and council members, I drove down here, after watching what I saw earlier tonight, pretty heated. You haven't seen me here, but you put me in that chair two years ago, about to the day. I've been doing tons of reading. I spent my summer reading every page. I dedicate myself to sitting in that chair and reading those reports and answering those emails. So, I hope that you'll turn this clock off and allow me to give you a little bit of my insight on what I spent my summer doing. Four items, and I get three minutes' worth of talking. I do want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to speak with you about the climate action plan, but I'm so heated right now over the fact that my maps in my bags don't match up. So, I specifically asked on the dais, "Are we rezoning east of Franklin Boulevard?" When I sat on the dais, and I was told, "No, we are not." So, I thought this wasn't even part of the process, but now I'm seeing the map is a different color. So, I'm a bit hot, so forgive me. I really came here to talk to you, as you all know, about the climate action plan. Most of you know me. You know my position and my stake on the climate plan. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Mackenzie Weezer. I'm the current Chair of the Planning Commission here in Elk Grove. I also serve on the Mayor's Climate Commission Technical Advisory Committee for the Built Environment. I work on climate policy for the state, and I'm appalled with the fact that we have such a weak climate action plan. You may have seen my article in The Citizen where I was interviewed about my frustrations about the lack of climate action in the city. Not one of you all called me about it. I called you. I all reached out to each one of you to tell you how frustrated I was with everything that I've been spending my summer doing. Here we are. You have a twenty-minute presentation on something I spent from July until November of this year, reading and researching and scouring over, reaching out to people, asking people at the state if this makes sense. Neither here nor there, Elk Grove's emissions are only a tiny part of the global problem. However, it is a global problem, and if we don't act now and act together, we will all occupy a hotter, more unpredictable, and harsher world. Please find it in yourselves to meet this massive challenge with the boldness and urgency that it requires. I realize I voted to move this climate action plan along as drafted, and you know the reason I did? Because I was promised by city staff that they would elevate some measures to you that my planning commission didn't support. I supported the measures. Planning commission turned it down. Please let me continue. I would be remiss if I didn't thank the staff for adding those policies back. Success tonight, for me, would be if you support the additional measures, gain further action for a stricter, more regional collaborative approach on climate. Consider joining the Mayor's Climate Commission. Reach out to those in your region. Partner with them. They've got great ideas. I'd also like to push on us. Let's not wait five years to revamp our climate plan. Let's call right now that we'll do it in 2022 versus 2024. As elected and appointed officials, it's up to us to make the changes necessary to save this planet for future generations. They are the ones who are going to have to pay for the sins that we created due to our inactions to make decisions to save the earth. We cannot wait to begin developing our city in ways that encourage greenhouse gas reductions. I will, again, be reaching out to each of you with some planning ideas on ways we can look at smarter development aimed at pulling people out of their cars and into their communities. I thank you for the opportunity to serve you. I do take it seriously, and I hope that you know that you can reach out to me at any time. I try to close the loop as much as humanly possible. I will challenge the maps. Please do look into them before you make that vote.
So, thank you, Mackenzie. And for the record, we have a meeting on the books, right?
We do.
In addition to that, I have requested to join the Mayor's Commission, so I'm waiting to hear from Mayor Steinberg.
Fantastic. Thank you.
All right. Next speaker is Stacy Anderson. Following Stacy Anderson is Michael Manaski.
It is a difficult challenge to follow intelligent people. That being said, I'd also like to echo my neighbor Amrit's statement about the rezoning of the Stone Lake Landing area would basically crush what is already a minuscule walkability score that we have in West Elk Grove. Aside from that, this is the westernmost part of Elk Grove. It's one of the lesser-populated residential areas in the city. It's bordered on the west by I-5 and Stone Lake's National Wildlife Refuge. To the south, we've got more of this beautiful refuge. And as you travel further east, as you know, you'll find more heavily populated, but still low-profile portions of Elk Grove. This area is home to the quiet, family-oriented communities known as Stone Lake, Laguna West, Lakeside, as well as to the occasional herd of cows and several coveted migratory birds and a noticeable number of protected species of flora and fauna. It's a delicate balance of wildlife and humankind, epitomizing responsible environmental stewardship with the careful incorporation of residential neighborhoods, small businesses, and community amenities. However, this proposed zoning change in the general plan is now threatening that balance for the sake of corporate giants, investors' profits, and perhaps potential political victories. Rezoning the Stone Lake Landing area to employment center makes it vulnerable to business and structures that have no logical or effective purpose at that location. In particular, this rezoning plan would allow for things like, oh, I don't know, the construction of a hospital to be greenlighted. However, according to the map included in the general plan, that area is clearly in a two-hundred-year floodplain. Now, three years ago, proposed safety amendment, SA-14, stated that the city would be required to locate new essential government services and essential healthcare facilities outside of a two-hundred-year flood hazard zone. of a 200-year flood hazard zone. So if this was the responsible course of action or inaction at that time, it would appear that the Stone Lake Landing area is not suitable to be rezoned to Employment Center. Follow me here, because that in turn, with my logic, disjointed as it may be, would open the proverbial floodgates to developments that could include essential healthcare facilities. Now, as it is now, the general plan just seems to be put in the cart before the horse. Rezone now, mitigate later. Don't get me wrong, even with potential mitigation, building something like this could create a 13-story hospital that is still completely reckless and irresponsible. It would, without a doubt, disrupt the delicate balance that we have going now. The rezoning of the Stone Lake Landing area needs to be stopped. And if anyone would actually like to take a look, who doesn't know here tonight, what that will look like if this does get rezoned, I invite you to check out stonelakeunited.com, which is the website of the organization, NEST, and it has all the pretty pictures of CNU's proposed hospital on there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm Mike Monaski. Following Mike Monaski is Andres Ramos.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the 10 o'clock rule.
All right, got a motion? Got a second or a favor? Aye. Pose of extension? All right.
So that means you're going to, you're finished at 10 o'clock?
We continue, sir.
Oh, you continue, okay. The burning of fossil fuels extensively over the last two centuries has poisoned our soils, polluting our atmospheres, and acidifying our oceans. The changes that have been happening have contributed to the growing concerns for the entire planet and human extinction. Human extinction due to global warming all point to a tendency toward rapid growth, not defined in additive but geometric multiples. Atmospheric, oceanic, and physical scientists have moved up the dates for land loss, weather disasters, and other human tragedies related to global warming. We're in the so-called zero decade set for rapid climate change beginning in 2030. Everybody needs to get on board, including local policymakers and citizens, who must write these errant paths of human misery and work towards mutual success. The city's adventures in expanding its sphere of influence have put Mother Nature and our fellow human beings in harm's way. This council's past and current practices serve to spawn suburban sprawl because current, because current additive growth policies lead to future multiplied adverse outcomes. So when you add, you think you're adding, but you're actually multiplying adverse outcomes. Suburban expansionism needs to stop and stop now. But that's not happening tonight, as the council will sleepily endorse the morally compromised proposals of an obeseant staff. This council and its campaign contributors are the enemy of the people. They dare to harm Mother Nature, her beneficent planet, and our species, demonstrating an unusual immunity to shame. While the facts scream for action, negligence appears to be our guiding principle. One of the things that I asked for originally, at the beginning of this last year, this EIR process was for inclusion of a human health impact statement. And it's interesting that it was refused because it was not a required element in the EIR. And yet, what we face within the next 75 to 80 years is human extinction and/or a great die-off of human beings on our planet. It's something that needs to be included and has been neglected. If you don't put it in there, you're going to look like fools, really. The, you know, Lynn Weet talked about the three, the troika of chronic diseases that she sees in the schools. Obesity, diabetes, asthma. These are chronic diseases that are being found in children, and they're all attributable to global warming. So we really need to change our attitude about this. It's too little, too late. And this should not be voted on, but I fully expect you to endorse it and rubber stamp it.
Thank you, sir. Andres Ramos. And following Andres Ramos is Amar Sherghel.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Andres Ramos, longtime resident of Elk Grove. For the sake of time and brevity, I'll just get straight to the point. I agree with a lot of the previous speakers that we need to strengthen our climate action plan and very seriously address the significant issue of climate and be proactive as a city, not just do the minimum, but be as proactive as we can. But specifically to that end, I strongly urge the council to adopt the staff-recommended alternatives to, with the EV charging, with the full PV-ready buildings, and the electrification partnership with SMUD to give it a little bit more teeth and reaffirm the commitment that the city takes this issue seriously, to, you know, not wait necessarily until 2024, but keep an eye towards being proactive and tackling this important issue. Thank you, and thank you to staff for the recommendations. Please adopt them.
Thank you, sir. Amar Sherghel.
Hello, my name is Amar Sherghel, Elk Grove, father of three. I want to thank you first for all your work tonight. I know you've spent a lot of hours, and I come to criticize sometimes, but I know you do, you know, a lot of community service, and I thank you for all those times. I'm asking you first not to make any changes to the Stone Lake Landing Plan. If you want to do something for the hospital, let's have a specific hearing for that, not backdoor it through this process. I think you've heard that from a lot of people tonight. Regarding the climate action plan, I support the specific items that you've heard already today. I do think the revision in two years is a good idea. This stuff is happening quickly, and I think four years or five years is too long. I thank the staff for adding some items that were missed at the Planning Commission, and I'd ask you to support those. We need stronger mandatory measures, and I fear that you all don't have the urgency that you've seen from your constituents. I think your level of concern matches where Elk Grove was five or 10 years ago when you were elected, but things are moving quickly, and I think we're ahead of you. And I think if you listen closely, you're going to hear that. And I say that because from this council, I've heard the following. Climate change science is voodoo science from the days. I've heard dinosaurs didn't drive cars, and where are they today? And, you know, those observations are horribly out of sync with the norm, but perhaps just as bad as those observations are that the council didn't really push back, didn't take the time to say, you know, that's not what I believe, and, you know, Elk Grove and the people here don't believe it. So I think that, you know, that kind of attitude might bleed through into this process. So, you know, we all get stuck in our rut of the things we believe. I encourage you all to really listen to what the people of Elk Grove are saying, what the community's saying, what, where we are, and where the mainstream of society is to inform your opinions today. And if you do that, I think that you'll choose stronger measures. You'll find funding. You'll stop sprawl. You'll turn the maze to shals. You'll make things mandatory. And I encourage you to find the courage to make the changes that our children are going to reap the benefit of. You know, we are, we will all be gone by the time these climate changes really take hold. I think that's a lot of the reason why we don't feel the urgency that a lot of children feel. And I know they don't vote for you, and maybe you don't hear from them tonight, but we've seen a lot of media where those kids are really asking for us to make the changes that we, maybe in our gut, haven't come to yet. So listen to those voices. And if you can't do that tonight, I encourage you all to take some time and come back again another day after you've taken time to think about it, particularly when we have four middle-aged, old men like me that appear to be taking the vote. At least have a woman that makes that decision with you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. George Murphy is the final speaker.
I wasn't going to get up here tonight, but I want to kind of echo, I sit next to Mackenzie up here on the dais, and I have felt her passion, and I've learned from her. I've researched, and I'm on board with what she's asking to do tonight. I did not go quite as far, but I really felt as though that some of the things that we could do, we should do. I've been doing a lot of research on my, I'm trying to walk the walk as well as talk the talk. I got a plug-in car. I'm looking at solar for my house. I know what some of these costs are. They are expensive, but when the time comes, we've got to be ready for them. So I can certainly support her position, and I can change mine. I learnt. The other thing I'm up here for tonight is I want to take exception to the inclusion of that, the acreage in the north study area. I stood up there with all of you folks and the other commissioners on our joint sessions, and we talked about that north study area and the inclusion of, I believe, 50 acres of open space.
And I know they don't vote for you, and maybe you don't hear from them tonight, but we've seen a lot of media where those kids are really asking for us to make the changes that we, maybe in our gut, haven't come to yet. So listen to those voices. And if you can't do that tonight, I'd encourage you all to take some time and come back again another day after you've taken time to think about it, particularly when we have four middle-aged, old men like me that appear to be taking the vote. At least have a woman that makes that decision with you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. George Murphy is the final speaker.
I wasn't going to get up here tonight, but I want to kind of echo, I sit next to Mackenzie up here on the dais, and I have felt her passion, and I've learned from her. I've researched, and I'm on board with what she's asking to do tonight. I did not go quite as far, but I really felt as though that some of the things that we could do, we should do. I've been doing a lot of research on my, I'm trying to walk the walk as well as talk the talk. I got a plug-in car. I'm looking at solar for my house. I know what some of these costs are. They are expensive, but when the time comes, we've got to be ready for them. So I can certainly support her position, and I can change mine. I learnt. The other thing I'm up here for tonight is I want to take exception to the inclusion of that, the acreage in the north study area. I stood up there with all of you folks and the other commissioners on our joint sessions, and we talked about that north study area and the inclusion of, I believe, 50 acres of open space, public space. None of us supported that. All through the Planning Commission hearings, none of us supported that. And at our last hearing, when we passed this on to you folks, it was in there. And I did ask to have it removed, and we all decided to have it removed. We agreed to it. A public space can be used for many things. Another one, could it be used for a park? It could be used for a school, college, or hospital. That's not, that's the camel's nose under the tent. We had a commitment from not only the 10 of us up there on the dais, but from the owner who spoke tonight, whose representative was here tonight. We had conversations following our meetings with the owner, the representative, got the same commitment, and then it was changed, and I believe it was in the October council meeting. That's not right. People expect certain things. I expect certain things. I stick to my word on this, and I brought up to the commission that it had been changed, and they agreed to support the decision I made earlier, along with you folks, to make that north area, study area, a two-acre minimum study area and not change it. So that's what I'm going to question you to do tonight, along with some of the changes. I do want to say one other thing regarding the young lady that spoke for the building industry. I think some of the infrastructure changes that are major should be looked at before we do a wholesale change. Going to all-electric and not providing people with gas might not be the thing to do. It just takes a choice away. When you go to electric vehicles of any nature, you do have some choices. You can give it a plug-in. You can do a hybrid. You can do electric only. You do have choices there, but you've got to charge them up sometimes. I just installed a charger in my house. It cost me 500 bucks, just on top of the car. But you know what? I think I did the right thing, and I don't have to go to the gas station very often. So I can support Mackenzie's request. And the last thing, I heard her on the dais ask about that zoning on that area there at the hospital. Are we changing the zoning? The answer was no. We're not, you're not being asked to change the zoning. I don't recall changing the zoning. I think, I agree with the folks. If you're going to do it, let's do it the right way. Let's have some hearings on it. That's a big project. I've talked to Darren about it, and he, we talked. He knows my feelings about it. You're going to run multiple businesses out of there, and you're going to take all those folks that live in Laguna, in West Laguna, and they're going to be driving someplace else out of town, spending their dollars, and creating more pollution. That's the antithesis of what we're trying to do tonight. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. King of the board, the chief speaker, what a close public comment. I would declare the public hearing closed for all items, 9.3A through D. Counter deprecation and direction.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I actually want to start off with 93B because the climate action plan, you know, as many of you guys know, I mean, I work in an industry where we're talking about climate change all the time, and, you know, get a little bit sentimental, but, you know, I just still remember as a kid recycling cans and asking my dad, why? Why are we picking up these cans? Why don't we just throw them away? And he said, you know, hey, this ain't for me. This is for you guys. You know, you gotta, we gotta, you know, take care of the environment and what you guys inherit, how you treat the earth, and how you guys inherit it is, you know, is important. So anyway, my, but I, you know, we have to balance that with, you know, the cost, and I recognize the economic impacts of things, but I do, I do think it's appropriate. I think it's time, you know, for us to be stronger on this climate action plan, and I agree with a lot of the staff's recommendations on here. So, I mean, if I could turn to it. So, so the first one, I'm proposing alternative actions, including alternative action one. And in doing, but I wanted to make a slight revision on the multifamily and non-residential portion. My proposal is instead of doing, well, for the residential, I want to, I want to go ahead and leave that as is on the one and two-family dwelling units. So for, for future development, having the EV ready and the branch circuit installed. And then on the multifamily and non-residential, I would propose to do, where you have the table as two and a half and two and a half, I would move it to all 5% and have it capable for future expansion. And then on the retail office industrial, similarly, so it'd be 6%, 10%, 6% to have them for future expansion. And then I would also propose to implement option two for the PV-ready buildings. I think having the structural elements at that time ready for photovoltaic requirement in the future, making it easier for the, whatever end user comes in there to put the solar on top, I think this is, this is an appropriate step as well. And then finally, on three, I would also, you know, recommend doing this, doing a study. And Christopher, I would ask that, you know, we work with the industry, look at feasibility, phasing, maybe we can do- phasing, maybe we can do a pilot project. But also, I want to, and John, I'm going to ask if this is not, this is not appropriate at this time, you will let me know, but I know we're working on doing that middle-income study, and I want to take a look at bringing in industry to figure out a way to make sure, or see how we can economically build more dense housing to cluster. You know, we need that smaller product to get into lower vehicle miles traveled. So, I want to, but I think this, these two, those two topics could be a good place for folks to have that conversation. So, essentially, I'm proposing to implement all three with some minor revisions in one and addition in number three for the Climate Action Plan.
Vice Mayor? Yeah. First of all, McKenzie, I feel your pain. For the first three years as a planning commissioner, I did double duty as a planning commissioner and as the General Plan Advisory Commission. So, dug into a lot of reading back then, too. If we're just talking about the Climate Action Plan right here, I'm okay with the EV charging in the houses. I'm okay with the charging spaces, but if you want to bump the percentages, I would only be willing to bump the future capable, not the existing, so that it responds to the growth and popularity of EVs. I don't think we're there yet right now. And then...
I'm sorry, what do you?
So, if you want to bump the percentages, I would only bump the last column, not the first column.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying, I'm saying, these go here, these go here. So...
So, you're not putting any in, you don't want to put any in the ground today?
No, it's all, for the, for the, for the multifamily retail office industrial, let's put them all, let's make them all capable. So, spaces with EV capable for future, but I want to double what we're saying for this. For the residential, yeah, we've got the 40, the branch.
So, what do you, what do you propose? So, I'm proposing leaving the 2.5% and 5% and 3% in the provide the spaces. And then if you wanted to bump the future capable, that's fine. I thought you wanted to bump both columns, is why I'm saying that.
No, I just, I just wanted to bump that.
And not provide any existing?
Well, I like yours better. If we do that, that's fine. Do that.
Is I just negotiating against myself there? I don't know.
Little bit. I'll take it.
All right. And then, but here's where I'm going to push back a little bit on you. On the commercial PV-ready, I mean, all of these things are costs, and it's costs to what could be a small business trying to start up. So, I would bump the square footage on that from a 10,000-square-foot project to a 25,000-square-foot project. And the other thing that I would like to see us do is encourage, rather than putting the PV on the roofs, I'm more of a fan of the PV over the parking fields, because then you're getting multiple benefits from it. You're getting the, the...
Shade and...
The shade of the asphalt, so that you're not getting the, I forget what that's called. You're getting the shade for the people's cars, so it's more comfortable for them.
Yeah.
And it's potentially something that can be retrofitted afterwards and not have to require any. So, I'd like to see that put in there. But now, here's where I'm going to, I'm going to push back is on the electrification, full house electrification, for a couple of reasons. One, I can tell you from personal experience that the state continues to ratchet down and ratchet down and ratchet down, and not always with good consequence. So, for example, it used to be that a house was built and it had a certain amount of air transfer. We call it the house would breathe on its own. Now, we are building it so airtight that we have to put in makeup fans to bring in outside air in order to circulate into the house. So, now you're running an appliance 24 hours a day to bring in air that the house used to get naturally. So, and then we went from doing traditional water heaters to now it's Insta-Hot water heaters that, you know, only heat the amount of water needed at the time that it's needed. So, that uses less gas. And then, the point was brought up about gas cooktops. You know, a lot of these choices in these houses are consumer-driven. When GALT wanted to implement mandatory fire sprinklers, first thing we told them is, "Your problem isn't with new construction. It's with existing construction that are more likely to have a faulty wiring or something go bad." And so, we had them do it as a voluntary, where we had to list in their contracts that they were offered the installation of fire sprinklers at our cost. No markup, no overhead, and have them sign that they denied that. And we had, of almost 40 houses, only one person chose to install fire sprinklers, because they said, "Well, that, for that same price, I can get granite countertops, or I can upgrade my flooring." And so, if you don't have the consumer demand behind these things, then you're just adding to the bottom-line cost of that house. So, I would not be in favor of the full electrification. If you want to do a study, feasibility study, okay, but...
Well, that's what I'm talking about. Because I think we need to feasibility study, maybe a test pilot. I want to see where the appliances go, if they get more efficient. And, you know, the other issue is how you're generating electricity in the first place, because if you're not generating electricity in a green manner, then, you know, what...
That's right.
What have we, you know, saved? So, that's all, that's all I'm talking about. I think, but we need to take a hard look at it. We need to start, I think we need to start investigating. That is the thing. And so, I guess I'm advocating for the investigation of it. And I agree with you. I mean, there's going to be a lot of, you know, it's going to be a lot of consumer choice going into that. I mean, there's a time when they, there's a builder, they did all steel framing, thinking that was, you know, going to be better than wood. And they tried those out in different places about, you know, 15 years ago, and it didn't catch on. They stopped doing it. Right. But I think if, one, we know the state's going that way. Two, we know that, you know, residential home construction, or residential homes are the second largest greenhouse gas producer. I think it's worth taking, investigating. That's all I'm talking about.
Councilmembers, it may be helpful to have Christopher Jordan explain the intent behind number three and the potential partnership with SMUD. I think there's a little bit of confusion about exactly what that number three would do.
Yeah. So, the way we've been looking at number three is, first and foremost, SMUD has some existing programs that we should be connecting folks with, particularly on the development side. Their incentives, and I think SMUD staff is here and can explain this a little better, but essentially, the incentives look at what it takes to, sort of looking at offsetting those costs for the design and construction related to those extra facilities. Maybe it's extra cabling and transformer work, or it's extra onsite cost within the structure. So, there's those programs we ought to be connecting folks to separately. We're sort of anticipating that as the state continues to impose these additional requirements, what does that end up looking like? How do we end up getting there with that implementation? So, we want to start working through those sorts of issues. And with SMUD as the power provider, they're a seat at the table. Likewise, because this impacts new development, we need to be talking with the development community. Additionally, ideally, this starts targeting into existing neighborhoods that will seek consumer choice in that conversion. What does that mean from a delivery service perspective, and what sort of improvements does SMUD have to look at from their infrastructure? So, the intent is that it is something more holistic that looks at that, and it's, out of that, we understand what regulatory environment would facilitate that. And then we have the conversation about the implementation of that. Again, we're anticipating the state's going to come along in the next few years anyway, so this gets us out ahead of that to have that conversation.
So, first of all, I know there's a representative from SMUD in the audience, because I saw her walk in, so I say this with no disrespect to you, Susan, but SMUD is not in the business of selling natural gas. They are in the business of selling electricity. So, it would seem to reason that they would want to see more electricity use, regardless of what the potential environmental effects of that are. And getting out in front of the state on this, that's what I'm telling you, is the state continues to ratchet down and ratchet down and ratchet down and ratchet down. And I'm just, I'm not in favor of it. That's it.
So, you're not in favor of number three? I can support number one, for sure. And number two, I had mentioned the same thing in my briefing, that I actually prefer the parking lot style, where you're creating shade for the cars, as well as, I think that's a great idea. The increased cost to do it structurally on the building may be more expensive in the long run than building them in the parking lot. Plus, you're getting the dual shade and energy at the same time.
Yeah. How about, can we do the option?
Yeah.
You know, that they can choose, you know?
That's fine. And then, then three, you know, I work for PG&E, so I cover both gas and electric, although we don't have electric in Elk Grove. For now, yeah.
Wait, four. Could you recuse yourself?
I don't think there's a reason to recuse myself, because I don't think it's in, I'll ask John. But it...
There's no need to recuse yourself.
But, you know, but from my personal opinion and experience, I much prefer gas appliances. They're, I think they're, you know, they're still more efficient, and you can control them better. I think there's a lot of value to that, but I think it gets back to the option, that people should have that option. Because it, you know, there's, I know there's been some subdivisions that have been built here in Elk Grove that they did not supply gas to the homes. The gas was in the street, but it was not brought from the street to the house. So, then it was on the residents, when they chose to want to convert something to gas, that they had to have the utility go through the boring expense and extend that. So, I think that should be an option with the builder and their clients of what they want to have. To go all-electric and not even, because I know there was some talk about not even putting the gas infrastructure in the streets, which I think would be a mistake.
Okay. All right. So, for me, number one is easy to support. Number two, I hear the Vice Mayor's suggestion. I would be in support of that. But I do like the option, the rather going roof or parking lot. That makes sense. Personally, I prefer the parking lot. I've, you know, seen multiple high schools in the Roseway area that actually have that, and I found that to be very useful, in that it does two things, right? It collects, you know, energy, not only that, but it provides shade. So, I am open to bumping it up to 25,000 square feet. I'm cool with that. Now, on number three, what I'm hearing is that, Vice Mayor, you're opposed to it, but you're open to feasibility study, right? And what I'm hearing is that, Councilman Sun, you're open to that feasibility study?
I'm looking for a feasibility study.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I can support that. You know, I want to look at how doable it is, and, you know, I mean, Councilman?
I definitely like, I'm okay to go with the feasibility, but I want to be, you know, very cautious how we proceed with it, and want to make sure we have all the stakeholders that are giving input on that.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay. Good.
Do you want to go through it to make sure we all have consensus? I'm sure Mr. Jordan took notes. I did, too.
I think the only thing I need a little bit of clarity on is what we decide, what you decided on the EV charging. I can bring the table that we had in the slide back up for ease, if you just want to go through that. And it seemed like it was a yes to as proposed, but I want to confirm that.
Well, the one is yes, as proposed, for the one and two-family dwelling, right? That's, this is new construction, right?
Yes.
And then, for the multifamily residential development, this is where, this is where I think we're saying, well, leaving the spaces with the EV SE percentages there. And then...
So, for sake of simplicity, I think what you said, as just on the fourth column there, and Christopher may be able to bring up the chart, on the fourth column there, you would essentially double the percentages, where it says spaces EV capable for future expansion, you would change those percentages going down to 5%, 6%, 10%, 6%. But I'm not sure if that's what the council was contemplating.
Well, actually, if you're going, if we are going to do them with, implement them in there, two and a half, if we have support there, then we'll just implement Table 1.
I'd be, I'd be okay with that, because part of this is, back with the electrification question and with this question, is, you know, technology's going to drive a lot of this stuff. And to give a glimpse of how wild some of these people are thinking right now, is they're talking about paving streets with PV, and then developing electric cars that much like you can have a cellphone that you set on a battery pack and it charges without actually having a physical connection, to have a proximity charge that would happen. And essentially, you could drive an electric vehicle on these roads and never have to charge it at all. So, I mean, I'm not saying that's ever going to come to fruition, but I'm saying that sort of out, out-there thinking is going to drive a lot of this, to the point where by the time...
That's exactly...
...it becomes to be, you don't need that conduit.
Well, that's why I was only going for capable right now on these big, because it's, this is really expensive, right, to do for these? I mean, the homes, I don't think is that expensive. You know, it's bigger, the single-family homes are the bigger impact than this. So, I was trying to leave room for that, but I'm okay with Table 1.
Okay.
So...
Table 1, as proposed.
As proposed, yeah.
Thank you.
So, that's Climate Action Plan. I do want to address the questions that were brought up tonight. I want to, Christopher, if you could maybe give some background of what's, is what we're proposing making it, because I don't think, I agree with what the folks said tonight. I mean, if there's going to be a project, if the project needs a general plan amendment or something, I mean, that's, that's through the process. I don't, you know, I don't think we should be given any presumptions on anything tonight. So, or, you know, with this document. So, can you explain that for me?
Sure. So, we have the general plan, which is the policy side piece, and then there's the zoning, which is the implementation, which has the allowed use regulations, the setback standards, the height, the height standards and all that. For the particular site we're talking about, for the CNU proposal, the existing zoning on that site is, as I understand it, two designations. There's the existing retail center, which has a zoning of GC or general commercial, and then there's the all-data building, the building that all-data occupies, and then the old AAA call center building, which is where the main campus function is today. That has a zoning of MP. There's a table in the general plan, which describes how those zones get implemented, or how they implement general plan policies. In the case of the GC, it specifically implements the community commercial general plan designation. We're proposing as the community commercial designation. That is a new designation that's replacing a number of existing commercial designations, but we've talked about this at the prior study sessions. There's sort of a one-to-one conversion we've done, looking at individual sites. And in this case, given the types of uses that are there in the square footages, the community commercial is the appropriate general plan designation, and it mirrors the existing zoning of the GC. The GC implements that. Versus, say, an SC or shopping center commercial zone, which is like where Target is located, or where Walmart's located, those are regional commercial general plan designations. There's a difference there. On the MP side, that has always been implemented by two general plan designations, either light industrial or an office designation. We have a couple existing office designations. Those office designations are actually transitioning to this new employment center designation. The intent there is, if the center is developed as, say, office-type uses, it would be an employment center. If it is designated or developed with more industrial uses, it would be designated with the light industrial designation, generally speaking. So, the MP can implement either one of those. So, I get there's a level of semantics here, and I apologize for the confusion that this sort of creates, but from a zoning perspective, the rezones that are coming in behind the general plan were not modifying the zoning in this case. The GC and the MP zones are staying exactly the same. I think where the issue's coming in, in the site of the employment center, is for the MP portion of the site, the MP properties, there is a change in the general plan that's going to employment center, and that's based upon the existing built conditions. The staff looked at that, this goes back to the study sessions we had back in 2016, 2017. If you look at the notice of preparation, the map there shows the employment center for that area. We looked at those sites and said, "Okay, these are developed with essentially office buildings, so they should have the employment center designation." Much like a lot of the area around here may have MP zone property. In fact, I think the site we're in, this building, excuse me, is actually zoned MP as well, but it has employment center as... as the proposed general plan designation, because it's more of an office type characteristic. So, again, I get there's semantics here, and I apologize for the confusion, but from a zoning perspective, the technicality is there's no change in the MP or the GC, yes, the general plan is showing the employment center component of it.
So you're taking the existing use today, and you're categorizing into the new general plan and the accompanying zoning designations?
That's the exercise we went through in 2016 and 2017, yes.
Right, so, so the confusion is here, and folks are thinking you're rezoning to make it easier for a proposed project, you're doing it to comply, otherwise you'd have a non, we would approve a general plan and have a non-conforming use right away, is what-
Well, I, I think, if we're, if you follow this down to the zoning level, I think that's, that's probably the easiest place to look at this, as we look at it, the zoning level, the existing zoning is MP, we're not proposing changes to that. If you wanted to say, leave the general plan designation as light industrial, put it back there, and avoid all the confusion, we could certainly do that, if you wanted to leave it as proposed with the employment center, we could do that as well, in either case, the zoning remains MP.
Oh, okay, that's fine, I'd be fine with that.
With which?
The, the light industrial is what I'm, I'm hearing.
Okay, strip it off. All right. Good. All right, what else? You happy?
I don't know what else we got. What other questions remain? Christopher?
Chris?
So I'll go back on the general plan side, because I know, in case the question, if you have it, if you want to do anything different, is the, the north study area piece, because you'd given us the prior direction, we have planning commission recommendation to remove it, that's the 50 acre public, quasi-public, just want to confirm what your direction is on that.
Christopher, go over what the, the issue was relative to why not to include the 50 acres.
So the language we had drafted in, this would have been in chapter four, dealing with the north study area, was a sentence that was added that read, "A portion of the north study area, parentheses approximately 50 acres, could be developed with public quasi-public uses consistent with the rural character of the area, subject to a subsequent planning effort." Staff's understanding, based on the community feedback we heard at the planning commission meeting and the planning commission's discussion, they were concerned about the compatibility of that and the consistency with the prior discussion through the joint study session process, and asked staff to remove it from the recommendation. I think you heard comments tonight from a couple folks that were at the meeting, that they've summarized it well, so...
If, if you're doing something that's compatible with the rules of designation, I guess I don't understand.
I think the question is, what does that end up looking like? Is there an ambiguity that exists, not an ambiguity necessarily, but a, you haven't, what's, what does this thing really start to look like at the end of the day? And, sort of the example I'll give is on the school side, if this were to be something like a university setting, what's the level of intensity that that really means? Is that something that ultimately requires some level of urban services, like public water and sewer? If it is, that likely wouldn't, based on the way everything's drafted, it would not be consistent with the rural, the rural pattern out there.
But right now, that's not allowed, so you won't be able to put a project like that in?
Correct, so at that point, what sort of use does that really start to look like? And if it's so nebulously defined, I think folks had concerns with that at this stage of the general plan. If an individual project wanted to come forward and propose it when that came forward, then it could be reviewed and considered, and may or may not require a general plan amendment, really the idea of leaving this sort of open ended. I would differentiate that from the other three study areas, where we do list public quasi-public uses, the specific intent there is, we know that there are educational institutions, maybe library facilities, fire stations, that would specifically need to be there, so we've accommodated those from an acreage percentage basis. Here, it's just more of a broad, yeah, we'll take a look at this in the future, I think that's the concern that we were hearing from the community.
Well, it would still, it would still have to come back for public review at that point.
Seven times, correct, several iterations.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I think it's putting the cart before the horse, there's a couple different LAFCO processes that would have to go through, that would identify impacts and, and pre-zonings, and to, to put this in the general plan at this point, I don't see a, a lot of benefit to it, that's my personal opinion.
Well, you have the, I mean, it is, it is a gracious donation from, for the, for the use of public facilities, I mean, you know, I know we've done that on, we did that on the, what, at the 70 acres at the civic center area, was a donation, and, you know, that's the way, way we've been able to, I mean, whether it's a sporting facility, or something that we could do-
Yeah.
-for the future.
Well, and, it's, it's a study area, there's, there's a lot-
What's that?
It's a study area, so...
Well, this one be, is, but it, what would that actually do as far as the mechanism at this point, on what you're basing this off of?
So having the language would provide the opportunity for the proposal to be there, and depending on what ultimately it looks like and what services it requires, it may or may not require a general plan amendment, when that study area came forward for consideration.
So I guess the, the option is whether you have something that we have, that we could maybe do something creative for the city.
Yeah. I, I think we leave it in for that.
We all agreed to take it out when we sat together on that dais.
That's fine.
I'm sorry, I mean-
We said fifty-
There's no point of us spending our summer reading all these reports if you guys-
Excuse me?
Sorry, I'm, I'm a hawk.
Yeah. Do we, do we not say 50, or even not 50, the, the area was the, to be studied, and it was two acres at the time, that's what I-
Yep. I, I, I'm still, I just see no reason to include it in there. You have a study area that's a broad brush, blank space, if some proposal comes forward in the future, okay, but I don't see any reason to put the cart before the horse.
We've had-
Preemptively, yeah. And so I think if, are there any other questions that you had, Christopher?
I believe that's it.
Okay, then I'd like to bring up the issue of densities in the triangle area. Just kidding, Stan, wanted to make sure you're still awake.
Wow, he's a levity.
Now he's gonna go fill out a speaker card, there he is, that fired him up. Quick, Mayor, bang the gavel, do something.
Okay.
I think that's-
Yeah.
Is that it?
Do we need motions?
CJ, we're good?
I got a que, I got a question for CJ relative to Mr. Hooper's comment, relative to the issues he brought up with the, who would be conditioned if a sound wall went and had to go in, and on that strip easement between safe credit union and the quick quash and, and the ingress egress from all those properties.
So that particular issue is, that's a project-specific issue, so it's not something that would generally be in the general plan level document, we'd be creating a specific policy for a specific site condition that would very much be a one-off. I think at that point, it's really more of a development process issue, what the conditions look like, and for that, I think Darren can actually address that more specifically.
Did you, did you, you had mentioned something about some language you changed from a few weeks ago relative to that easement?
So what you're referring to is the, the way the original shopping center that's behind where Quick Quack and the credit union are, there's a parcel there that extends out to, out to the street, so it would, in basic mapping, when we select the whole property, it would normally just fall under the medium density residential, that, that piece, the undeveloped portion, that would be captured in, but in looking at it more the last couple of weeks, we said, no, wait, we need to leave that as commercial all the way through. So basically, you have the bank, you have that strip land that would remain commercial, and then what's the car wash site would remain commercial, and then it's the balance of the property that's behind it is the only thing changing to residential. So we've taken care of the, the general plan piece, the zoning map got, draft got updated to reflect that, so you'll see that again when it comes forward. So I think the only really remaining issue, as I understand it, is the wall question, and again, I think Darren can address that.
So the, the wall, we've, we've decided with the application of, well, Quick Quack came in, and both of them were commercial, so the wall wasn't conditioned at all, we feel it's reasonable to put that condition on, if, if approved tonight to the medium density residential portion of that project, as they're the sensitive receptor, not, not the commercial side.
Okay. Plus, is, is the timing of the applications make a difference between the residential and the commercial?
Not necessarily, it would, obviously, if the MDR came first, and then you had years and years of, before a commercial came, that, that could pose a problem, but ideally, you know, if the commercial piece is ready to go, I suggest they get their application in, and then we can, you know, deal with the, the MDR down the line.
Do you hear that, Mr. Hooper?
I did, thank you.
Okay.
I'll move motion one.
Got a motion?
Second.
You got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstention?
Move motion two.
Got a motion?
Second.
All right, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstention? Next motion.
Motion four.
You got a motion?
Second.
You got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstention?
Motion five.
Motion five.
Second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstention? All right, next item.
Take us to section 10, regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with item 10.1, which is consider a resolution dispensing with formal request for procedures-
Mr. Mayor, in, in the interest of the hour-
...leading to regional transit.
I can give a brief update here, and, and some action that I'd like to request, and then we can move forward.
All right.
So unfortunately, at the RT meeting on Monday night, a couple of the board members expressed concern over the potential financial impacts of, of the proposed contract to RT, and so the RT board voted to form a subcommittee of Director Natoli, Director Hanson, Director Shinir, and myself. Our city attorney was concerned that might be a conflict of interest of, of me essentially serving two masters, he's since come back in some, that's not a competing office, but just in the interest of redundancy, I would like the council to direct me to participate and advocate Elk Grove's interests in this.
Of course.
Absolutely.
And then, I think we'll continue the item to the March, whatever it is, meeting, would that be the most appropriate?
Either March 13th or March 27th.
So let's shoot for the 13th?
Okay, because I'm, I won't be here on the 27th, so, and, when's it, because contract expires in, in April.
So we have to have the, the contract decision handled by March in order to have the ramp-up time for the switch over in July.
The 90 days.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So we've already got a meeting scheduled for Monday, so I'm hoping this will be one and done.
Get it done.
Yeah, great.
Don't want to hear the item tonight, you're going to be, council member Hume, vice mayor Hume, you're gonna be directed to continue your negotiation efforts, and then this is gonna be brought back, I didn't hear, is it the 13th or the 27th? I think 13th.
Whatever's ready.
Well, I think date certain would be 13th, and if we have to continue it from there, we can-
That'd be fine.
Works for me.
Yep.
Okay. Do we need a full, a motion and second and a vote?
We do have some-
Don, do we need a formal vote on this?
We also have some, the public signed up to speak on this item.
Oh, we do have.
Hold on just a moment, so you don't need a formal vote to continue, it's not a public hearing, what I think I'm hearing the council say is you'd like to have it brought back on the 13th, and if we are not ready on the 13th, we'll come to the 13th and tell you we're not ready, but you would like an item on the agenda on the 13th?
Correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
No, I, I think there's public comment, it's, if, if you're not gonna hear the item, it can be held over to the next time, but if someone's here to speak on public comment, I think it's appropriate to go ahead and let them hop. We do have members of the public to speak, you know, I'm, I think it would make better sense if we just continued, and asked the speakers to come back on 13th.
Well, I think we should give them the opportunity, if they want to speak.
Yeah, they waited this long.
Okay, all right, I'm fine with that as well, so let's go ahead and open public comment, and call Mr. Mike Barban, and following Mike is Chris Flores.
Great. Good evening, thank you, Mayor Lee, council, staff, Mike Costa, Public Works Director, Robert Murdoch, and city staff. First of all, I want to thank Mike and, and Jason for the conversations we've had since Monday leading into this item. I want to thank council member and RT director, Pat Hume, for the long extensive days and hours, if not weeks, of his effort put into this. We are trying to correct something that was made as a decision by, by the first Elk Grove City Council, and I've had to live with it, which makes it very difficult, especially if you work a lot of days with folks in the parrot transit community, it is not regionalized, we're trying to fix that, so I want to thank everybody involved on, on the effort for this. You have before you a PowerPoint presentation that was at the RT meeting on Monday at, at your dais, so you have a little bit of a feel for what was presented there. I think this evening, just to recognize everyone that has been involved in this effort, I would recommend an intent motion to conditionally award the contract with the stipulations recognizing what happened at the RT meeting on Monday night, concur on the amendments, perhaps if needed, bring it back to RT, and I invite the council as a whole, including, I'd like to extend the invitation also out to council member Wynne, who couldn't be with us this evening as well, to attend any of or both of the RT meetings in March on the 11th and the 25th, both are at 5:30 in the RT auditorium, so then, when the item does come back to RT for concurrence of the amendments, for them to vote on, that at the latest, it would come then back here on the 27th to get the final go-ahead. The 90 days that Mike had talked to me about on the phone, that's very critical, and with April, May, and June totaling 91 days, and March 27th being the last council meeting in March, that would only give us then the 28th and 29th during business hours to give that formal notice of the termination and start the July 1st contract with RT. So that's my advice, and hope the council will take some of that into consideration, but thank you for having us tonight.
Mike, you're losing your touch, you're over by 10 seconds.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Next speaker is Chris Flores, following Chris is Elva Carrasco. Oh, Christopher?
No, he's here, he just wants to speak.
Oh, he doesn't want to speak? Okay. Elva Carrasco? And then Doug Cook?
No. No, thank you.
Nope, waving? Okay, Doug Cook, no? All right, excellent. That's it, want to close public comment, and let's move to the next item.
Take us on to item 10.2, which consider potential terms for an agreement with Clean Harbors and Environmental Services for the Special Waste Collection Center.
I have a brief presentation for you, and I will try to make it even briefer, more brief. So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, Heather Nuff, Integrated Waste Manager. The item before you this evening is to consider potential terms to extend an existing agreement with Clean Harbors to operate the Special Waste Collection Center, and to provide direction to staff as appropriate. We contracted with Clean Harbors in 2013, just before the- just before the Special Waste Collection Center opened. There was actually two RFPs that were issued, one for operation of the facility and one for transportation and disposal of the waste. Clean Harbors was selected as the winning proposer for both of those, and so it was consolidated into a single contract. The initial term expired in 2016. We exercised our option for the three-year extension. That extension will expire this coming June. So we started drafting a new RFP in 2018. As a courtesy, we notified Clean Harbors of that proposal, of that process, excuse me. They wanted to continue providing services to us. So in turn, they submitted some proposed terms for an extension to that contract. Really quickly, those proposed terms include a modified monthly labor rate. Right now, our labor rate is based on a fixed portion plus a variable portion that depends on how many customers we get each month. So our monthly bills can be very variable each month. They're proposing alternately a fixed monthly labor rate of $37,500 per month, so that would allow for a lot more predictability in our budgeting. The other portion of our monthly costs are the disposal costs for the waste. They've identified about seven or eight of our most high-volume waste types and offered a reduced per-unit disposal cost for each of those. And those two items would then be those rates, the modified monthly labor and the reduced disposal costs, would be locked for two years. After that, those rates would be adjusted by the Consumer Price Index with a minimum adjustment of 1.5% and a maximum of 3%, which is kind of similar to what we did with the Republic Services franchise agreement a couple of years ago when that was approved. They've also offered to set up a new door-to-door hazardous waste collection program for seniors and disabled persons. This is actually something we've been wanting to do for a couple of years. We did get quite a few calls from residents who have batteries for medical devices and just old paint, and they just don't have a way to get it to our facility. And so we'd like to get this program, and this is a great low-cost way to do it possibly no cost if we partner with them on this program. When we received these terms, we did some analysis looking back at our invoices over fiscal year 2017. We compared those costs under the current contract versus the proposed terms. Labor would have increased by about almost 9%. Disposal costs would have decreased by about 9.5%. The net effect would be about 1.3% overall net increase. To put that number in context, looking at the CPI, inflation has been running about 3.5% to 4% over the last couple of years, so that's a pretty reasonable increase. We also wanted to look at the other side. If we were to accept those proposed terms versus to actually go out and do an RFP, what would we be looking at in terms of the market? What kind of results might we get? So I reached out to some jurisdictions who have done RFPs for similar services over the last couple, about year to 18 months. And there was a handful, and the majority of them got very few proposals. They were typically just those top two companies, Clean Harbors or Stericycle. And the other jurisdictions noted that most of the time, the proposals were very similar in nature. Sack County noted that their top two proposals were actually so similar that their ultimate decision came down to some very nitpicky items. So what we found in talking to the other jurisdictions at the market for HHW services is pretty small and fairly homogeneous. And if we were to go out for RFP, we would most likely get at least two, maybe three proposals. So in making our recommendation to you this evening, we made the following considerations. If we were to go out for RFP, there would be some staff time spent issuing the RFP and reviewing the proposals. Over the past six years, we have had excellent service from Clean Harbors. I frequently get compliments from them all the time. The number of complaints I've gotten, I could probably count on one hand, if I could even remember them. They've been so few and far between. There would also be some transition time, staff time spent, and customer impact, if we were to go out for RFP and if there was a different vendor selected. And then also, just looking at the estimated net increase of the proposed terms, it appears to be a pretty reasonable increase. So given those considerations, staff is recommending that you direct us to proceed with the preparation of an agreement with Clean Harbors to continue providing services at the Special Waste Collection Service Center and return with a proposed agreement to City Council for approval.
Any questions, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, one question, Heather. About how many cars come through the SWCC a month?
It started out, we predicted about 800 cars a month, and we're doing about average between 1,800 to 2,000.
Okay, that's all I needed to know, because a $15,000 increase divided by about $20 per car for every car over 600 was 750 cars. So if we're doing north of 1,500, 1,800, then that's a good price. Thank you.
Councilman Sun?
Yeah, thanks, Heather. Just, you know, 1.3% increase overall, but, and I guess I'm just asking for your affirmation. You must believe that the overall price structure that you're getting is, you don't believe you could get a significant reduction regardless of staff time. And I mean, you weighed that all in, obviously, but I guess I just want to hear the words.
We did quite a bit of due diligence. Clean Harbors provided their own analysis, but we didn't feel like that was enough. And so we did quite a bit. We spent a lot of hours going through past invoice, trying to predict into the future. So we did run it through the runners. We did a lot, yeah. I do feel like it is, I would not bring a proposal forward and recommend a deal if I didn't feel like it was a good proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I think it's great to move forward with this, and there's no one signed up for public comment, so I'd move staff's recommendation.
All right, let's officially open and close public comment, and we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose, abstention?
That'll take us on to item 10.3, which is to receive information, provide direction to staff regarding converting 12 contract positions to city positions and creating one new city position in operations and maintenance division in the Public Works Department.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, Bob Murdoch, Public Works. I'm going to do a brief overview to provide context for this item, and then Sean Gallagher, Public Works O&M manager, is going to come up and give the specifics. I just wanted to say, and I've said this several times before, O&M is, when I got here, isn't what we needed to be. It's a reactive organization that relies on flexible contracting model that isn't as cost-effective as it should be. And so you've seen glimpses of the changes that we need to make. We need to become a more proactive, more programmed-oriented maintenance organization, one that's more cost-effective, and one that stretches the maintenance dollars we have to the greatest extent possible. And so you've seen a few things come before you, whether it was pavement management or pole painting, that give you a glimpse of what we're doing. This is part of that ongoing effort to make the organization much more efficient. What we're recommending is not going away from the contract model. We're just recommending a different contract model. Because my belief is, the current contract model won't allow us to become as efficient as we need to be. It won't allow us to get to where we need to be. And I think ultimately, I see, and I think Sean agrees with me, we see millions of dollars in savings a year that can be yielded from this effort. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Sean to talk about the specifics. Thank you.
Good evening, council, mayor. Again, my name's Sean Gallagher, and I'm going to kind of take you through the process, starting off with the background. So since incorporation, City of Elk Grove is dependent on the contract model, most prominently in the Public Works and Development Departments. Beginning in 2008, the Sinclair Report recommended the city transition to core-level staff. The highest level of priority included the recruitment and hiring of Department Directors for Development Services and Public Works. During the 2008 economic conditions, council requested the city manager to have another audit done of the Public Works Department. When this report was finished in 2010, it further recommended converting staff at that time, which led to the division managers and several other key positions within the Public Works Department. In 2017, Public Works O&M received another audit, and that report recommended converting all the staff currently provided by Willdan over to city staff. As that report was provided one month after my hiring, Bob tasked me with reviewing it and kind of going through it and seeing if everything that was in the report could be implemented and what else maybe could be there. So Willdan was awarded a contract in 2011 to provide maintenance services for O&M. They contract directly with different types of contractors to provide these services. Prior to Willdan, these contracts were held with the city. Currently, Willdan supports three of the six divisions within Public Works, and their contract is set to expire May 1st, 2019. So the two models shown here, the current model shows how the structure is kind of set up right now. So we contract with Willdan, who then contracts with multiple contractors here. So taking like Arrow, who serves as our street maintenance contractor, and several other subs that provide street maintenance, sidewalk landscaping, and multiple other things. The existing model is unlike other contract cities who utilize core-level staff to oversee city contract maintenance services. The proposed model shown on the right is just a different type of contract model, and as shown above, essentially removes the intermediary. City staff will then contract directly for field services, operations, and maintenance needs. The proposed model mirrors other contract cities. So there's three basic ways that we're proposing to find these significant savings. The first is transitioning 12 positions to core staff. The city positions will significantly cost less, provide a more efficient staffing structure, provide a larger candidate pool, improve our institutional knowledge. The second item is contracting directly for maintenance services, will increase the number of bidders on maintenance projects, and restructuring the contracts will reduce our costs. And the final thing is purchase of city materials, where currently it's purchased through subcontractors. So I'm going to go through each one of those separately. So the chart here basically shows the cost savings for transitioning to city staff. The analysis shown on the chart does take into consideration benefit, leave, pers, office space leasing, and other costs associated with city employees. In addition to city staff conversion, this provides several benefits that are critical to O&M. Staff's proposed staffing structure provides for better flexibility and the ability to handle greater workload. For example, the proposed structure will now be able to perform preliminary resurfacing inspections, which will save the city an additional $80,000, which isn't shown here currently. Another benefit is a larger candidate pool. Since many of these types of positions are typically city or county employees, they're unwilling to give up their benefits and security of working for an agency. The limited candidate pool reduces maintenance and institutional knowledge, which is a key aspect of delivering effective services. Not shown on the slide right here is the new position, the administrative analyst, which is needed whether O&M converts staff or not. The position is needed due to increased workload and responsibilities, overseeing asset management and preventive maintenance programs. The total cost is estimated for that position at $142,000. So city to contract directly for maintenance services. The current process of securing contracts through the consultant has yielded limited bids. In 2016, Willdan received only one bid for each of their contracts, whereas when the city did a concrete repair contract, it received five bids with the low bid 20% or higher mattering on the unit below the current rate being paid through the Willdan. Willdan packages work into one large contract, which can be easier to maintain with limited staff, but yields higher prices. We have seen that when specific maintenance tasks are pulled out and bid separately, it results in significant savings. An example would be our crack ceiling, which we do in preparation for resurfacing projects. We had a price of 15 cents per square foot through Arrow Construction, which is a subcontractor of Willdan. When we bid it out separately, we received a 3 cents per square foot, a fifth of the cost of what we were paying for, allowing us to stretch those dollars even farther. We saw the same thing. Bob touched on streetlight pole painting, which is one that we presented on recently, where we saw the price cut in half when we pulled that task away from a bundled contract and bid it out separately. There's also a duplication of reviews. Willdan reviews all subcontractor invoices, which then have to be reviewed by the city. So that with recommendation to going to core staff, we would lose that duplication of service, further saving us some money. And finally, the 1.75% markup that Willdan adds on top of all of their billing would be removed and is estimated to save us roughly $100,000 a year. City purchase of materials. The city wants to start purchasing more materials due to the subcontractors having a 15% markup on all materials. So by the city purchasing materials, we will save roughly $75,000 annually. But we're also seeing that subcontractors don't always secure the lowest prices. They work with vendors they are typically used to working with and have no requirement to seek out the lowest rates. A good example is an Elk Grove Auto Mall sign project, which a subcontractor provided us a price of $20,000 for the signs. But when the city reached out and did the purchase process, we received the price of $4,500 for those signs. So, and then, so the next steps, the next steps would be to extend Willdan subcontract short-term during the transition. Willdan contract with the city would be extended. Convert contracts to city contracts. Recruit and hire in a phased approach. And what I mean by that is, it'd be too difficult to hire all the positions at one time, taking a very staged approach to hiring each of the positions through the division. And then perform material and equipment purchases. Budget for the purchase of three city vehicles this fiscal year, which are needed because of their delivery being the first quarter of next fiscal year, and then purchasing the remaining vehicles in next budget cycle. And then the final slide is a chart kind of summarizing all of the savings, just that we can estimate, this doesn't take into account contractor rates being cheaper or materials being purchased at a cheaper price, but it roughly will save the division a little over $1 million annually. And I am happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions?
No questions?
I do have a question, though. You know, obviously, Willdan has been very responsive and cooperative and doing a pretty darn good job. My only concern is, will, what will we build in so to ensure that these subcontractors are responsive and the same qualities maintained?
Well, I think the responsiveness is built into the contract that they have so much that time mattering on what the project is. We said in response times in all of their contracts, we would use our performance measures, which we're building into the contracts now. So what we require, like a streetlight to be repaired within five days, those would be built into the contract, or there'd be liquidated damages for not meeting those kind of things.
You know, assuming if that's the case, right, we have it built in already. I'm also curious as to the impact staff would have in terms of maintaining multiple subcontractors as opposed to just dealing with one.
Well, what I find right now is, we, myself and the city admin, do a lot of this maintenance ourself. The reaching out to multiple contracts and doing all that stuff has been really led by myself and the admin, whereas before, it was bundled up very close. A lot of the newer contracts have been under my direction, and I feel that with the existing staffing structure or the proposed staffing structure, we would be able to, fully capable of managing the contractors.
Okay.
Sean, is that the format you used when you were in Stockton?
No, we had city maintenance crews, but we were transitioning to more contract work. So where, like, we had a park maintenance contractor, we had tree maintenance contractors, we had striping contractors, but we had more hotshot. At one time, Stockton did have the full-service kind of thing, but they were transitioning more of that stuff towards contracting with core staffing kind of overseeing those.
But you've worked with the other subcontractors?
Yes.
When you're, in the same kind of method?
Yes.
That you're proposing?
Yeah, I oversaw multiple maintenance contracts for the City of Stockton.
Okay. No other questions? Thank you. Oh, you got one?
No, it's not a question, but I got briefed on this item, and you know, I'm always wary of organizational bloat. But when you have a situation where we can bring But when you have a situation where we can bring core in-house staff that provides diversification of opportunities, opportunities for advancement for people, and still result in over a half a million dollar saving just for the labor, let alone all of the other things, when you're talking about a million dollars that can either be realized as a savings and/or reprogrammed to do more with the same budget, it's hard to overlook that. So I would make the, I guess it's just a direction item, but I say full steam ahead.
Yeah, that's a very good point, right? I mean, the amount of money that being saved is overwhelming. And you know, eventually I predict the future in which the city of Elk Grove is going to be moving into a comprehensive city. That being the case, I think as hesitant as I am, I think this is the right direction, so.
I think it's a no-brainer and if Vice Mayor, that was a motion, I'll second it.
It's just provide direction, so.
I don't think it's an action item, so. All right, do you have enough?
Quick bang in the gavel before Darren starts to talk.
All right. This meeting's ending at 11:13. Thank you.